Portland's charitable campaign was introduced by Commissioner Mike Lindberg back in 1989. The campaign allows city employees to donate to their choice of participating charities through payroll deduction. Employees have donated more than $3.1 million over the last 11 years. The 2019 campaign will run from November 5th through November 30th. To kick off this year's charitable giving, I'm going to read the charitable campaign proclamation. And then Strategic Communications Manager Jen Claudius and Communications Management Analyst Janet Storm are here to receive the proclamation on behalf of the city. And when I'm done reading it, maybe we could go up in front and get a photograph. And if Betsy's around, she's usually our, I think, our go-to council photographer, but maybe, Michelle Plumbuck is here to be our go-to council photographer today. Whereas the city's charitable campaign was established in 1989 by then-Commissioner Mike Lindberg as an opportunity for employees to give money to charities through a payroll deduction. And whereas the city's charitable campaign represents an easy and important avenue for city employees to support the charities in their community that matter the most to them. And whereas eight city-partnered nonprofits and 12 umbrella organizations representing nearly 400 charities will participate in this year's campaign. And whereas these groups help make positive changes in areas including but not limited to the environment, education, healthcare, social justice, housing, arts and culture, child abuse, equity, human rights. And whereas last year, city employees donated more than $260,000. And whereas city employees donations have totaled more than $3.1 million over the last 11 years. And whereas the commitment to charitable giving is demonstrated by city employees year after year. And whereas the citywide charitable campaign will open on Monday, November 5th. Now therefore, I Ted Wheeler, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim the month of November to be "Citywide Charitable Campaign in Portland" and encourage city employees to participate in the city's charitable campaign. Thank you. Ladies, did you have anything to add?
Just thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity.
Very good. Maybe we could just grab a photo down front. Excellent. And then Jen and Dan, could you step away for a moment and can we get a photo of just the five council members?
Great. Thank you.
I just want to remind you, I've not given you my express permission. All right. Good afternoon. This is the Thursday, November 1st, 2018 session of the Portland City Council. Carla, please call the roll. And I did not realize my mallet was as heavy as it is today. Sorry, Commissioner Fritz.
Here, we swapped his mallet out for a hammer.
Here.
Fish?
The mayor will be taking part in some anger management programming after council today. Here.
Saltzman.
Here.
Wheeler.
You know, I gotta just say this. It turns out that working out is finally paying off for me. Here. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Portland City Council. The city represents all Portlanders and meets to do the city's business. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during the city council meetings so everyone can feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the council clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or first readings of ordinances. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When you have 30 seconds left, a yellow light goes on. When your time is done, a red light goes on. If you are in the audience and would like to show your support for something that is said, please feel free to do a thumbs up. If you want to express that you do not support something, please feel free to do a thumbs down. Disruptive conduct such as shouting or interrupting testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being ejected for the remainder of the meeting. After being ejected, a person who fails to leave the meeting is subject to arrest for trespass. Thank you for helping your fellow Portlanders feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe.
Thank you very much. Carla, we have one item today. Could you please read it?
Yes. 1135. Adopt the Southwest Corridor Light Rail Project Preferred Alternative and Direct Further Actions.
Commissioner Udaley.
Thank you, Mayor. The proposed action before council today is to adopt the preferred alternative for the Southwest Corridor Light Rail Transit Project along with supportive actions to assure the project is developed in a manner that addresses key issues and opportunities in Portland. With the Southwest Corridor Project, we have an opportunity to deliver high-capacity transit service and safety improvements to one of the most congested parts of our region. In doing so, we can make significant strides in achieving our climate goals and provide real transportation access to jobs and opportunity. That's a lot of opportunity in these talking boys. Our favorite word today, word of the day, opportunity, for all Portlanders. It's not often we get to make such transformative investments. The Southwest Corridor Transit Route is the final planned leg of our regional transit network and our partners to the west, and we have been waiting for this improvement for many years. The improved connectivity for Portlanders and those living or working in Tigard, Tuolton, and beyond will be a buffer against the traffic congestion that we know will continue to grow with our population. This corridor has a thriving education sector populated by PSU, OHSU, NUNM, and PCC. These institutions provide a diverse range of workforce and professional service training for people in this region. Improved transit access between these schools will encourage collaborative offerings and allow students to spend more time on campus and less time on the road. There are many important project elements to be evaluated and refined in the weeks and months and probably years ahead, such as connections to Markham Hill, the route through the crossroads area, balancing the size of park-and-ride lots, improving access to transit stations for pedestrians and cyclists, and developing the Ross Island Bridgehead Project, among others. One of my favorite opportunities. As we've done on all prior light rail transit projects, we will be asking the project team to develop a conceptual design report that studies issues and concerns and identifies opportunities in partnership with our Portland neighborhoods in preparation for future design phases. This is an essential next step in moving the project forward. Without protections, large capital projects risk actual displacement of housing and gentrification. In 2016, this council directed the development of an equitable housing strategy for the corridor to get ahead of issues we've experienced in the past. I've stated before, the commitment to a housing strategy is essential before implementing this transit project, and I would not support it without it. I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge the vital work of the Southwest Corridor Equity and Housing Advisory Group. They've come up with an amazing plan, and I'm looking forward to continuing to work with them. So today, I'm happy to announce that the cities of Portland and Tigard, with Washington County Metro and Trimate, have agreed to work together to promote affordable housing, business stabilization, and other development in the corridor in conjunction with light rail, something that will truly move us forward in terms of livability and equity. Now I'd like to invite Counselor Bob Stacy from Metro and Doug Kelsey, Trimate's general manager, to provide some opening remarks before the staff presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Commissioner Udaley, for that introduction, which allows me to dispense with my talking points. I'm pleased to have the opportunity to provide some words of encouragement for what I think is a very important decision, which is only partially made. Your action on the preferred alignment is the first of many steps which the commissioner has outlined. In fact, the commissioner is the third member of this council that I've had the pleasure to work with as co-chair of the steering committee. I apologize. I'm Bob Stacy, Metro Counselor for District 6. I'm here representing the Metro Council. Commissioner Saltzman and I had it termed together, former Commissioner Novick. I've been co-chair of this committee for six years, and it's been around for seven years. And as the commissioner says, it'll be more years before the detailed work necessary to ensure that this alignment decision becomes a carefully designed community amenity lie ahead of us. Again, as Commissioner Udaley said, the region is growing rapidly, and that growth will be felt in the Southwest Corridor through Portland into Tigard and Tuolton. And this transportation project can guide that development and will encourage some of it to occur in Southwest. We know that transportation investment leads to growth in property value, and that can lead to displacement of small businesses and low-income households. There are, at most recent count, some 11,000 houses, homes, that are affordable to low-income households in the corridor. We are committed, as obviously the city is as well, to ensuring that we can preserve and expand upon that supply as development occurs in the future with this transit investment. The cities and our partnership in developing an equitable development strategy and housing strategy is critical to avoiding the displacement that has occurred in past public investments for transportation purposes. On Tuesday of next week, the voters of our region will have an opportunity to support the Regional Affordable Housing Bond, and Metro is committed to ensuring that the appropriate proportion of those funds are spent on maintaining and increasing the supply of affordable housing in this corridor. This is probably my last occasion, other than my vote on the Metro Council as steering committee co-chair, because we're passing the baton on this project to Trimate. We've come through the planning stage. The final design and implementation will be led by Trimate, but with the full participation of participating communities. On November 15th, with your affirmative vote today, the Metro Council is poised to approve this locally preferred alternative and forward it to our partners. Thanks very much. I have to scoot to my own council meeting, which also began at 2:00 p.m., so forgive me if I now depart unless you have a question for me.
Colleagues? Thank you, Councilor. I appreciate your presence.
Good afternoon. My name is Doug Kelsey. I'm the general manager with Trimate. Thank you, Commissioner Udaley, for your comments, Mayor Wheeler, and commissioners. As Bob noted, the region's growing quickly, and so is the Southwest Corridor. The estimates have this corridor growing with 70,000 people and 65,000 jobs by 2035. The models, they also show that I-5 between Portland and Tigard will be congested up to 17 hours per day by that point. By 2035, the Southwest Corridor Light Rail is projected to carry approximately 43,000 daily rail riders. In the years ahead, it will only grow from there. It's essential for projects of this complexity and size that we partner together, and I believe we are doing just that. This is one of the largest infrastructure projects in this region's history, and yes, it is a complex one. We are currently having designed just approximately the 5% level. There's an immense amount more to go. However, in the next few years, we will all be needing to work equally closely together with the community on the other 95% to create the best new rapid transit project this region has ever seen. That's why Trimate is extremely appreciative of Metro's leadership to get us this far. It's taken many years, as Commissioner Stacy has noted, but it is again only at the 5% mark with an immense amount to go. I would also like to thank Commissioner Saltzman for your helping to guide the project to where we are today. Through your role in the steering committee and the LPA recommendation, it really is greatly appreciated. And for those in the audience and at home, it is often not understood the complexity to help everybody across the finish line to points like today. Thank you so much. I also want to thank the City of Portland staff. They have been tremendously steadfast in their advocacy for the people of Portland, in front and behind the scenes, the city's land use vision, and the transportation project that benefits all modes of travel, not just rail, as we have an integrated system. I would also like to especially thank Teresa Boyle. She's worked with Trimate for many years. This is not her first project. This is in fact her fifth light rail project. And she and all the city staff do a fantastic job, trust me, on the other side, representing Trimate's and the City of Portland's interests, but particularly the City of Portland's interests. One of the indications of the continued success of the partnerships is the MOU on affordable housing, an important cornerstone. This represents extensive collaboration among your bureaus, Trimate, Metro, to help address the rising housing costs in this region and the complexities that come with it. This agreement was born out of the inclusive work that Metro facilitated to advance an equitable housing strategy. And it included many city bureaus and their directors. Chris Warner from PBOT, Joe Zender with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, Shannon Callahan from the Housing Bureau, and Kimbley Branham from Prosper Portland. Each represented vigorously and brought important considerations to this agreement. I would like to thank these real professionals for making this agreement happen. It really does take a village. We look forward to continuing the work with the City of Portland and other regional partners as we engage in the community in advancing this project design as we get ready ultimately to go for federal funding, as we compete for those dollars like never before. Staff will be up next here shortly to outline the project and to address specific questions you may have. Personally, having lived in other regions, this is a really exciting time. It's a challenging time, but one I think will be memorable for this city and for this region. Thank you so much for considering today's efforts.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Mr. Kelsey. And now I want to invite our staff team up to the table.
I'm Teresa Boyle with Transportation. I'm the city's manager for the Southwest Corridor Light Rail Project. With me today are staff from Metro and Trimate and our own Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, who also will have a part in this presentation. They'll introduce themselves when it's their turn. So we'll be doing as staff, project overview, talking a little bit about the land use and the perspective that provides us on the project. We have a work plan to discuss and some information for you on next steps. There'll be a public testimony moment, and we have some invited testimony. I will be calling the invited testimony, and then we'll step down for public testimony, and then we can come back for questions. So we have a lot going on today and in the coming months. Wanted to bring to your attention the fact that we will be back next week talking about the jurisdictional transfer of Highway 99 West, Barbara Boulevard. Metro Council has actions to take in November. And then early in 2019, we will be establishing a steering committee and our community advisory committee. We're going to be in what's called the project development phase. This is really a workhorse moment for the team. We have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of input and feedback to get from our citizens advisory committee. The steering committee is going to be making decisions, and we'll be developing all of it and publishing it in a conceptual design report and publishing an FEIS, excuse me. So big picture, here's where we are today.
Teresa, could you explain all the acronyms as you go along, please?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
FEIS.
I ran out of time on my slide. FEIS is Final Environmental Impact Statement, Conceptual Design Report. I will often probably be referring to it as a CDR. I'll do my best to define upfront. In early 2020, we expect to be asked to commit our share of local match to finance the project. And if we hit all of these other marks, our projection would be that we could open this light rail for service in 2027. We talked on Division Transit a few months ago with you about it being synchronized swimming. This is really more of the open water marathon swim, and I think we're about 25% of the way into it. Got a long ways to go. Next up will be staff from Metro and Trimate.
All right. Good afternoon. I'm Malu Wilkinson, Investment Areas Manager at Metro, and I'm happy to be here today. I am, okay, I am going to start. Oh, how do I do it? Do I click like that? Nope. Let me get you out of there. Sorry. All right. Are you just going to operate? Okay. So I'd like to start just by stepping back and reminding us all that we began this look at high-capacity transit in the Southwest Corridor really as part of implementing the 2040 growth concept and our regional vision. And this vision includes protecting farms and forests and natural areas, focusing development in town centers, along main streets, in employment areas, and investing in the transportation that supports the people being able to move around in the region that we all enjoy and live in today. So as you heard from Counselor Stacy and from Doug Kelsey, this part of our region is really growing fast. We are expecting 70,000 more people in the Southwest Corridor, which goes from Portland to Sherwood by 2035. And it's not only a place where there are a lot of people, there are a lot of jobs. This is really a job center of our region, and we have many jobs there right now. We're expecting even more to be there in the future. And most of the people who work in communities in the Southwest Corridor don't live in those same communities. For example, in Tuolton, 93% of workers live outside of Tuolton, and they're just moving around. By 2035, we're expecting more than 255,000 people to be working in the Southwest Corridor, and we want to be sure that people from across the region can get to those jobs. So the infrastructure in parts of the Southwest Corridor isn't really supporting the people who live there today all the time. And that infrastructure will be even more taxed as we anticipate the future growth in the area. This is just an example of infrastructure in the Southwest Corridor on Barbara Boulevard. 55% of it doesn't have a sidewalk on both sides. This is something that would be addressed with the Southwest Corridor Light Rail Project. So if we, oh, can you go back one? I'm so sorry. It's okay. Oh, wait. I? I'm out of order. We, okay. So can we go to this one? Yep. Yes. Okay. We switched the order. I switched the order on Teresa. So when we started this project in 2011, we started it with the direction of the Metro Council and the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation that identified the Southwest Corridor as a top priority for regional high-capacity transit investment. In 2011, in October, the steering committee met for the first time. That means they've been meeting for seven years, almost monthly. There were 12 members of the steering committee representing 11 agencies and jurisdictions. And when we started, we really started with the land use. We asked the cities to work with their community and identify the places where we anticipated future growth to occur. And so on that map that you see, those circles are the places that the community identified for future growth. And you can also see on that map, there's a dashed line that shows the Southwest Corridor Light Rail Project. That clearly doesn't connect all of those circles on the map. And so Teresa, we're going to have to work together here. We then, because of that, the steering committee defined in 2013 a shared investment strategy. This shared investment strategy was endorsed by all of the project partners. And that, SIS, as we like to call it, because we love acronyms, apologies, Commissioner Fritz. And this is an acronym that we really liked, which we defined a shared investment strategy to support the love, the love being the land use vision. And this strategy included all types of transportation investments to enable people to better walk, bike, drive, move freight, and ride transit. It also included green projects, and we actually have an inventory of habitat and parks investments in the Southwest Corridor that crosses jurisdictional boundaries that we never had before. And that's something that we don't talk about much now, but it's a resource that our partners out there can draw from even today. One of the outcomes of the shared investment strategy was actually the bus line 97 that Trimate put in place to connect downtown Sherwood with downtown Tuolton, on Tuolton-Sherwood Highway, that was never there before. So that was a relatively short-term, felt short-term at the time, it's been a while now, outcome. So with that, if we can go to the map, that one, nope, yep. So this map here, one of the centerpieces of the shared investment strategy really was a major transit investment. So what you can see on this map is the region's high-capacity transit network. In dotted lines, you have the Southwest Corridor, and you have Division Transit Project. And you can see on that map that that helps fill in a missing part of our high-capacity transit network. You might be able to see on your screens the network behind of the local transit service that is also obviously critical to allow people to move around. The other thing that you'll see on this map is that it doesn't show city boundaries, it shows places. These might not be the places you want to go or that everybody would want to go, but it's representing a concept that people really, they care about the places that they want to get to, either to work or to play, to watch a game, to go to school. And so that's what we're trying to serve, are the people who are trying to move around the places. So now if we can go to the picture of the person. Awesome. And so what we're aiming to do with these kinds of investments is really give people the freedom to choose how they move around. And one person is Admira here in this photo, who is training right now for a new career at OHSU, Oregon Health Sciences University, moving from cleaning operating rooms to being a pharmacy technician. And this will really help her change the things that she's able to do with her family. She's a single mother. And this is one of the pieces of the Southwest Corridor Equitable Development Strategy that we're working on right now, along with the transit project. So now the CAC. Perfect. CAC. Perfect. So, our process started with land use, as I said, and it's focused on both how we serve and how we engage people. Over the last seven years, we've had thousands of interactions with people, both informal and formal opportunities. For the last year and a half, for the focused work that we've been doing to get to a locally preferred alternative, we convened a community advisory committee. We had a very competitive application process. There were over 40, I think it was actually close to 60, but I couldn't remember the number, applied to be on the community advisory committee. We only had 19 positions. And so, those 19 positions represented people in Portland, Tigard, Toowallatin, and Washington County. It included people from businesses, community groups, and institutions. There were 14 monthly meetings. These meetings started out being two hours long, but we were asked to have them be longer. They were two and a half, sometimes three hours long. These people really worked very hard to understand the issues related to choosing an alignment for the light rail project. They really tried to understand, I think they got a great sense of how hard it is to make these decisions, and there are so many factors to weigh. And despite that, they came to a consensus on the locally preferred alternative that they recommended to the steering committee in August. And so, that group, I just want to express a huge amount of appreciation for all the people who served on that CAC, and also to Erin Key from Metro, who managed that. I just want to say a little bit more about the engagement that we did, because the community advisory committee engaged those 19 people who were communicating with those that they represent. But we also sent out, we sent letters to businesses and individuals throughout the Southwest Corridor. We had our documents for the draft environmental impact statement online and in offices and libraries for people who wanted to actually thumb through a hard copy and didn't want to print it. We had open houses, we had informational hours with staff at libraries, we had three public hearings. We did, we blasted out through email and social media information about the project. We wanted everybody who could pay attention to learn about it. We had advertisements and newspapers, and we were available to go to neighborhood associations and business organizations to present and answer questions. And I want to just tell you a little bit about a culturally specific testimony event that we had in Tigard in partnership with Unite Oregon. So, we worked with Unite, and we had a three-hour event where the first part was a bilingual presentation about the draft environmental impact statement, the information in it, and the initial route proposal that was there. After the presentation, we broke into small groups. We worked with the attendees to train them how to provide effective testimony to decision-makers, whether it was written or orally. I think it can be anxiety-inducing to only have three minutes to provide the information that you want to convey to those who are making decisions. And then, once we'd trained them, we had Counselor Stacy and Counselor Dirksen, who co-chaired the Metro Southwest Corridor Steering Committee, there to accept public testimony from those who had just been trained in a comfortable environment. And we really, it worked well for us. We would like to be able to do more events like that in the future. And so, I'd like to end with emphasizing that as we move just one step closer, as Teresa said, it's a long marathon swim through open water, one step closer to investing in the Southwest Corridor Light Rail, it's really critical that we focus on the end goal that we're all working towards, which is, with our 2040 regional vision, our goal is inclusive growth. Our goal is that we have inclusive growth through equitable development so that all people can enjoy the types of investments that we're making throughout the region, and that you're helping us with here today. That includes housing, and you already heard quite a bit about the housing. We so appreciate the work that Portland and Tigard did together in the equitable housing strategy that you adopted last month, Trimet's commitments on housing around stations throughout the region. And as you heard Counselor Stacy mention, we might potentially have a new tool to work with in a couple of weeks. Also, our goal is to not just focus on housing, but also have workforce development and business stabilization programs as part of our equitable development strategy that we're collaborating with our agency partners and our community partners to develop right now. We have some pilot programs. One of them is a partnership with Oregon Health Sciences University and the Immigrant and Refugee Community Organization that is helping Admira, who you saw in the photo earlier, move from a lower-paid job to a more, to a higher-paid job. And so, it's really critical that we do this work in coordination with the light rail project, so that we are aiming towards inclusive growth as people continue to come to this region that we all live in and love. And so, Dave's gonna tell you more about the actual light rail project.
Thanks, Malu. Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Dave Unsworth. I'm Trimet's Project Director of Project Development and Permitting. I'm really excited to be here today.
Thank you.
I'm gonna hopefully succinctly tell you why this is a great project and the path, the many options and alignments that we took to get here. But really, what we're really trying to do with this project is build low-cost transportation that is reliable and gets people to where they need to go. And so, if you look at the first bubble there, you see two bubbles on the lower left side. What we note here is Tigard, Toowallatin, and City of Portland have a reverse commute. There's as many people going out to the high-paying jobs in Tigard and Toowallatin as there are people coming to downtown and working in those areas. So, this is why it works very well for us. We're expecting about 40, as Doug talked about that, about 43,000 rides per day near 2035. By addressing congestion, about one every five people heading south since the PM peak are gonna be on light rail. So, that takes pressure off of I-5, that takes pressure off of Barbara Boulevard as we look at it. As we look to address our climate smart goals, if you are, our climate action goals, this is one of the key things. Get people on reliable transit service out of their cars, connect them to the communities. Connections are what we do well. If you look at the orange line, it's making sure that we connect people, we build sidewalks, and we imagine how that street, Barbara Boulevard, is gonna be redone. And we build off of the great work the City Portland has done with the Barber Concept Plan. Infill is part of that, transit-oriented development, and probably with this project, more affordable transportation-oriented development. So, it's taken us a long time to get here. Hopefully, it'll be a faster trip, it will be a faster trip from Bridgeport into downtown Portland in the future, in comparison to cars. So, we're expecting it's about 30-minute to be on a train. That takes you by all those station opportunities as you go by there. 2035, we're projecting, on a normal day, which there are fewer and fewer of those, it's 29 minutes to get there from a car to downtown Portland. What we know about I-5, when we see more and more people come in, the freeway, the roadways get more fragile. So, you better plan for twice that time, 58, 60 minutes, in order to make sure you're getting there on time. So, it's that fast, reliable service that we think is really important. Next one. Access. So, this is really about connecting people to jobs, and I'm not gonna go through all the slide, but with light rail, you provide in 30 minutes 70% more access for households to jobs and to other locations. So, we're making it faster, making it more reliable for people to get to connect to the places that they want to go, whether it's education, whether it's a job, whether it's getting home at night. Next one. The marathon began, really, in 2013. We started with 30, 60 different alignments, where we have gone through, whittling that down, with a very good public involvement process, where we've been engaged with people all the way down the route. The pros, the cons, the pluses, the minuses. You weigh all of those to try and figure out what is the best set of alignments that should move forward. And really, that's what we're here today. We think, we hope, and we've heard with unanimous recommendations from the steering committee and the CAC, that we think you've got it pretty well at this 5% level engineering. Let's go back to the next one. It really started with, is bus rapid transit BRT another acronym for you? We've got a quarter. Every time we do an acronym, we ought to be looking at local funding for the project. Light rail, we compared the pros and cons of that and what we realized with bus rapid transit. By the time you'd actually build it 10 years after, you're really at capacity. And was that the right, and it wasn't as much of a savings. We also looked at tunnels. We looked at tunnels under Markham Hill. We looked under tunnels under PCC. The determination was extend it as far south as you can, get that benefit, connect to all those other centers. The cost of a tunnel really would make you stop much, much shorter than you really would like to go. It's really more than light rail, and you've heard part of this before. It's the connection up to Markham Hill, the 18, 19,000 people that want to go up there every day. Can you make it a shorter, more reliable connection to them? We have a shared transitway. You may, I think you know this, on Tillicum Crossing, buses that are coming in from Gresham, from East County, get a faster way in in downtown. So, for about 1.3 miles, they share the bridge, they share the alignment with light rail and streetcars. So, they get through that. Same thing for buses coming in from Hillsdale. We'll see a shared transitway where those buses actually operate on the bus line and get into downtown faster. PCC is a really important connection. So, if you're gonna start out and you can't afford a four-year college, that's where you're gonna start out with your training. We've gotta do a great job of connecting to it. A tunnel would have done that, the cost was too much. We're looking for other opportunities through shuttles and improving 53rd Avenue to connect to that. Sidewalks. So, Malu showed you a snapshot of 55% of Barbara Boulevard doesn't have sidewalks. This project will fill in those gaps, and we'll do it where bikes are protected and we have safe and secure sidewalks as we move forward. The alternative, this is the moment today, is really about, after we've whittled down to those 60, to this most promising alignments, where do we, what do we base that on? First was the problem statement. What's the purpose and need of the project we're doing? We had a draft environmental impact statement that looked at the pros, the cons, the trade-offs for that. We had significant public comment, not only through the CAC, but open houses. I spent many nights away. Probably a good thing at some times, having those conversations. Lot of agency input. And we also are, it's a take-home exam. We know that our Federal Transit Administration, we're competing against projects in Seattle, Los Angeles, Denver, and other locations. So, we're, we understand that we've got to do some work to make sure it's ready, and it's a cost-effective, good project. Now, I'm gonna quickly walk through some of the choices that were made here. On inner Portland, inner Portland segment, we had two different options, either being on Nato Parkway or being on Barbara Boulevard. Barbara Boulevard was less expensive, it was faster, and it had a lot fewer impacts on the historic neighborhood that we go through there. It had probably a better connection up to Markham Hill. For those reasons, we chose to move that forward. Also, that shared transitway, you see the words "The Woods," basically from about that location comes in and connects into downtown Portland. Now, I'll remind you, much like the orange line that we connected to the yellow line, this line, we haven't had a color for it, but it will connect into the green line that comes in from East County, comes through downtown Portland, and will continue down further south, making that a better connectivity than there is currently today.
Can you just leave it the green line?
Pardon me?
Can you, why not just extend the green line?
It's more complicated than that, I'm afraid, and I'm not in charge of picking the colors, but I'd be with you if I got to choose that. I'll take that back.
I've been lobbying for a purple line for 15 years, I just want to say.
And after five lines, maybe you get to choose one, right? So, but I'll let you guys sort it out. The Vermont and Newbury Viaducts currently today, ODOT owns that roadway. That precludes really very safe bicycle and sidewalk activity is very narrow. We expect to replace those. And so, as a result, from the Barber Transit Center all the way into downtown, there'll be wide sidewalks that address those connections that need to be made. This is not quite outer Portland, but essentially the next section out, and I would say from Fred Myers, which is Custer, you can see where the stations are. We had two different choices, to be adjacent to I-5 and impacting some of the ramps, and having stations that weren't well-celebrated, that weren't as safe and visible, and probably didn't embrace the Barber Concept Plan as well. The steering committee unanimously with the CAC said, you should be in the center of Barbara Boulevard. We have work to do on this project. Doug said we're at 5%. That's probably right. And I would point, one of the first places they have work to do is around the Barber Transit Center. How do we get over the crossroads? We had a meeting two nights ago that focused on that. You may hear more about that later. We know we have more work to do on that, and we're all in on doing that. So, those are the alignments as we look at moving further south. The connection up to PCC, whether it's a bus shuttle or something else, as we look at improving access on 53rd Avenue is pretty important. So, the next steps for us as we move forward, we ask our federal partner to move into project development. It's a Mother May, it's a pretty big step. Trimet will form a new steering committee, probably a smaller committee. That means we won't have Sherwood, we won't have King City. It'll be more constrained to the people that actually are touching their property, Washington County, Trimet, Metro, City of Portland, Tigard, Toowallatin, and Durham. More public, we'll form a new CAC. They've done yeoman's effort. We'll ask to reengage that, and we'll ask for applications for that as we move forward. And we'll be advancing designs and engineering, working with SWEDS, another acronym, the Southwest Equitable Development Strategy. We'll be completing the environmental document, that's the final environmental document, and completing what you would call the CDR, but I may call it Conceptual Design Report as we move forward. Big moment in November 2020. Have we painted a picture? Have we argued why people ought to be spending more on transportation? So, that will be a choice for the voters in November 2020. We seek to secure federal funding against a very competitive process. We've been good as a region by pulling together and doing that. And the light rail opening on a bright sunny day in September 2027. This is the same kind of schedule that, if you don't like to read a lot of words, kind of does it graphically, but says the same thing. Eric?
Thank you. My name is Eric Kingstrom. I manage the Comprehensive and Strategic Planning Program in the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. I'm gonna talk about growth, land use, and housing in just a few slides. It's already been mentioned several times that the Southwest Corridor is expected to grow by a lot in the next 20 years, 70,000 people. Within Portland, excluding South Waterfront and the central city, the Portland portion of the Barber Corridor is zoned capacity for more than 10,000 new housing units. And that's enough to accommodate about 8% of the citywide 20-year growth forecast. We can do better than that, actually, and I'll talk about that in a minute. At least 3,000 of those homes could be within a block or two of the new station platforms in Portland. The Ross Island Bridgehead Project area could also accommodate an additional few thousand, additional new housing units, including 300 to 400 more on land currently occupied by highway ramps. As was also discussed last month, we can, if we can successfully marshal new resources for the equitable housing strategy, our goal is that at least 700 units will be affordable to those at 60% of MFI. With existing resources, our minimum target is 350 units, which includes 150 new and 150 to 200 acquired or converted. Land is also a critical element of achieving the targets in the housing strategy, and has been mentioned earlier, there is a new agreement, MOU, with the project partners that speaks to that. Not all of the land acquired for the project will be needed long-term, so construction staging or parcels that are partially purchased but have land left over. So, the MOU spells out a process by which there's an opportunity for cities to acquire some of that land for, to facilitate affordable housing as the project wraps up. City agencies are also exploring if there are ways that we can acquire property and make that land available to Trimet as part of our contribution to the project, also facilitating housing eventually. Next slide. As Metro noted, we planned this with land use in the lead. Within Portland, the Barber Concept Plan, which you adopted in 2013, identified those key places along the corridor that we wanted to serve and created a vision for some of the alignment choices that eventually were made. The preferred alignment connects those dots. There are key educational and employment destinations along the alignment, which you also already heard about. And you may recall that through the comprehensive plan, a number of those were upzoned and rezoned, because we discovered during that process that those are some of the fastest-growing sources of jobs in the city right now. And so, this alignment also helps connect that employment and educational opportunity, and in anticipation of more growth. Next slide. The 2035 comprehensive plan anticipated a transit investment in this corridor, and the Barber Capital Highway Crossroads is a town center in that plan, both in the city's plan and on the 2040 vision. Other town centers in the city include Lentz, Hollywood's, and St. John's. So, we can do more with land use as the light rail plans solidify and our station locations become fixed points. And thanks to Metro funding, we're embarking on this year, this year on a new land use plan for the West Portland Town Center. This new planning effort can help expand zoning capacity in and around the transit center and can be a vehicle to continue efforts to avoid displacement of existing residents, especially the communities of color and immigrant communities that have a foothold there. These are conceptual images, I should note, of the West Portland Town Center, what it could look like, both from a bird's-eye view and a sidewalk level. But we'll use this process to figure out what we really want, if this or another vision is more compelling. And I also want to be clear that this is not about just what it will look like, but who it will be accessible to. Next slide. This project also fulfills some very long-term plans. The Ross Island Bridgehead Project is a concept that dates way back to Portland's very first neighborhood plans in the early 1970s, the Corbett Layer Hill Plan. Next slide. We're also beginning the process of updating the historic design guidelines in the South Portland Historic District and setting up a process to fine-tune land use around the Ross Island Bridgehead as that project evolves. This is an image of the Harvard Drive Expressway construction in 1940, and this was Portland's first freeway. And the section of it in South Portland is really a remnant today that most of that highway was removed to build Waterfront Park. My last slide. This is an image of the Ross Island This is an image of the Ross Island Bridgehead and what it could look like with a revitalized Nato Parkway. Trimeste mentioned that the Barber alignment has been chosen, but that really creates an opportunity for a neighborhood main street on Nato as that is re-envisioned. The Gibbs, which is in the foreground of this image, is a critical east-west pedestrian and bike connection that helps make this land use vision work. It links the transit station with a revitalized Nato Parkway, South Waterfront, OHSU, Toowiliger Parkway, which you could argue is a destination in its own right. I'll pass it back to Teresa.
Thank you. So we have a lot of work coming up, a lot of technical work. We have environmental work to do, the CDR, the conceptual design report, and we'll be updating costs as well. So this really, this really is outlined, we have a work plan and it is, has been directed by the Steering Committee. That's, if you look at Exhibit A, that's attached to your resolution on pages 18 to 20, is a specific, a specific plan. And this is really intended to help guide our completion of the FEIS and do some of the other issues evaluation. We wouldn't be doing this process if it weren't with input and, oh my mic, community engagement. Yeah, all right.
Close, you're too close to me.
I might be, yeah?
Yeah.
Is that better? Thank you. Thank you. So we'll be having many meetings, emails, websites, lots of meetings with property owners. And in the near term, the things that we will be soliciting and getting feedback on have to do with a couple of key topic areas. The crossroads alignment, as was mentioned previously, Markham Hill connector, station locations, park and ride locations and sizes in a PCC shuttle. While that's going on, as Eric mentioned, will be, BPS will be doing some evaluation of land uses and we'll also be furthering the Ross Island Bridgehead. The conceptual design report, you've heard about it, here it is. These are the three that I have been involved with, starting with Interstate Max, the downtown mall, Green Line, and then the Portland-Milwaukee line. They're all available online. So the conceptual design report is a way of capturing the work efforts that we are doing over the next many months, and it is intended to illustrate in a, in a clear and accessible way what the design elements are, how we've addressed issues, and it directs us for our future work. It has a strong community component, as do all of the individual technical analyses. It will be coming to our Planning and Sustainability Commission, it will be coming to our Design Commission, and it will be coming to you. We'll, we expect to release the draft in this fall of 2019 with a final in early 2020. So I'm going to just hit these near-term topics that we're going to be talking about for you before we do public testimony. We'll start with the crossroads. So our Steering Committee chose B2. For those of you not playing along at home, that's a bridge alignment that flies over the crossroads on the south side of Barbara Boulevard and a Taylor's Ferry alignment that is also called refinement 2. They asked us to evaluate these and consider a Smith alignment. Smith is one that was brought into us through our CAC by a neighborhood member. So we started that evaluation work and we've actually come up with more. You never want to get a bunch of engineers in the room and ask them to evaluate anything because we've got more. We have a Smith modified and we also have a new alignment called Collins. So we met on Monday, as Dave indicated, to talk about these five alignment choices, and we'll be meeting again in early December, and my guess is we'll wrap up sometime in January, really looking for the Steering Committee to be able to provide an alignment selection in, sometime in early 19. These are pictures of the alignment options. I wouldn't spend a lot of time looking at them, but there are five of them and they bracket.
Teresa, sorry, there it is. We lost the picture. I think we're good.
You're good.
This is it?
Yeah.
They really bracket the crossroads area. The things we heard when we brought in the Taylor's Ferry option from the community are the ones listed above. Lots of concerns about really all the things that we need to look at. Traffic congestion, should we, should we use Taylor's Ferry Road? Impacts, environmental impacts, property impacts, and what it does to support or not support a vision for the town center. The technical considerations are below. That's the type of stuff that we also consider. So this is the Collins alignment, and it is on the north side of Barber Transit Center, which is the brown blob in the center. The idea would be that it would have a station area near the transit center and then cross under Capital Highway using a very short tunnel segment, and then it would be on a bridge from leaving that tunnel and crossing over to I-5 in approximately the same, same length and similar orientation that the Taylor's Ferry would have. We have gotten a lot of feedback, actually, on this already, and it's got its, it's got its, it's interesting qualities, but we'll be continuing that analysis. Spreadsheets and engineers like spreadsheets. This is out there. If any of you want to get these, I'll be happy to forward them to you, where we'll be continuing to develop. We have a whole host of elements that we are reviewing and evaluating when we look at each one.
Teresa, before you move on, could you just explain to people at home why, and some who've written in with testimony, why not just continue on down the center of Barbara and fix the crossing of I-5 in the current alignment?
Right, so us with acronyms. That was B1, B1, because it was all of our initial thought that that's where light rail transit would go. It turns out that to add that light rail onto the existing Barber Bridge over I-5 means that you're replacing the entirety of that bridge. In and of itself, it's quite a feat, but it is substandard in terms of I-5 clearances below, and we have a tremendous amount of work to do to replace that bridge, to provide the clearance it needs. The whole bridge has to come up significantly and it will affect property owners and property accessees, represents a lot of cost, and we have a concern that there's a risk element floating out there that as we do that realignment, we may be asked by the Federal Highway Administration to do some other things around the ramps, and for this particular project, that's simply a bridge too far.
Thank you.
So, we like B2 and we like Collins. This is the technical team. This is, this is what we took to the neighborhood this week. We'll see what all their comments are, but we will be, continue to be moving forward. Part of these have to do with the, the fact that we do not have to replace the crossroads bridge and the Barber World Foods is displaced. So I do just want to acknowledge Commissioner Fritz, your concerns that you raised so capably in our work session about the Taylor's Ferry alignment, and I heard, we all heard you loud and clear, and you were right and we were wrong, and that, I'm saying it, that refinement to Taylor's Ferry alignment, it just doesn't work. It affects Barber World Foods, it affects traffic, and so we are looking elsewhere.
Lots of thumbs up behind you, Teresa. Thank you, that's very gracious.
We're going to talk about Markham Hill. These are renderings. Note, they say sample concept. This is a vision perhaps of what could happen in terms of connecting from the transit center on Barber at Gibbs up to Markham Hill.
So could you just go back to that? Because that's something that's continued to baffle me since the work session. That gets you to Toowiliger, but it's really steep to get up to Toowiliger to get to the hospital.
There's, there's another part. I can pull that up later if you'd like to look at that in a little more in detail.
Could you go back to that?
Sure.
So tell me just from procedurally, given what we're doing today, which is to accept the LPA, tell me where, where do the fine details on projects like that get hashed out?
Oh, I'm going to my next slide. Look at this.
Thank you.
I got a whole slide of process and this is just the start.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Fritz, just as I look at it, it looks like a major undertaking, and I would have questions about that, and I want to make sure that by accepting the LPA, we're not accepting that as the final strategy there.
So I can, I can confirm for you that what the Steering Committee has asked us to do is to evaluate connections up to Markham Hill. The rendering you saw is, is one concept, but we will be using, we'll be modeling ourselves on what we did when we decided where to build the Tillicum Crossing Bridge and deciding what that would look like. Very involved process. So we'll be forming a stakeholder committee in early 2019 that has representatives of the city, friends of Toowiliger, the neighborhood associations, OHSU, Trimeste and Metro, and they're really going to peel it back and define the values that that connection would need to have, evaluate the options, opening up the options and considering our own regulatory framework that that connection would reside within, and then recommend a type of connection to the Steering Committee.
So is it a fair characterization if I, and I really don't know the answer to this, is it fair to say it's highly conceptual? How would you characterize this in the course of what we are doing here today?
I would say it's, I would say it's pretty conceptual, Dave.
Yeah, I think I would agree. I think there's a, what we heard when we stepped away from the tunnel underneath the Markham Bridge that would start, that would have started further into downtown was, when we stepped away, let's make sure we don't lose that contact to OHSU, Markham Hill and the Parkway. It's really important. And so, we know, we've done some evaluation, looked at like inclines and things like that earlier on and came to, these are the most promising, but we've held this off because we know that this is an important area and this is very difficult. So we're going through trees, we're going near a Parkway, we're going through neighborhoods. It's got to be done well, and in doing that, I think we've recognized that a stakeholder committee that can weigh all of those with public input, that then goes to a Steering Committee that has public input, that goes through environmental impact statement, and then ends up going through two different land uses at the City of Portland, one for environmental and one for design, there's a lot of opportunity. So we don't have it right, we know we don't have it right. What we're saying is, by this LPA, this is a really important connection, we believe, that's what we heard from our Steering Committee, that's what we heard from the public testimony, that's what we heard from our Citizens Advisory Committee. Let's try and make this connection. How you exactly do it, there's not certainty on that, and hopefully this process helps do that.
I want to agree with you that in concept, it would be a huge lost opportunity not to connect this to OHSU. I think that would be almost ridiculous.
The question though is where to connect.
And how?
One of the amendments that Commissioner Udayli and her staff have already accepted in the substitute exhibit that we have before us is to add to the Markham Hill and Portland Community College connections, an additional phrase to consider options avoiding crossing Toowiliger Parkway. So in other words, not doing that at all, but doing it maybe from the mall or somewhere else.
Good, and I was going to let Commissioner Udayli introduce the substitute when we're done with the presentation, but I couldn't miss this opportunity right here with the schematic.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Let's talk a little bit about PCC, another very important place to connect with this project. These orange blobs on my screen represent places where students are traveling today to go to Portland Community College. In the lower right-hand corner, you'll see some information that we have about mode split, and really the striking one for us is that 10% of students currently use transit. That's, that's in such a contrast to, say, Portland State University, where the majority of the students are taking transit. And it, it's a long connection for them. They have parking up on the hill, that is, it's, it's challenging, and as we know with our looking at affordable housing, transportation choices and what one has to pay to maintain a car really affect the funds that people have to spend on their daily lives. So finding a way without a tunnel to connect this light rail project to PCC and provide a meaningful opportunity for students, administrators and staff to get to the college is very important to us. So the Steering Committee has asked us to look at some bus shuttle options. The one in purple is a loop effectively that would bring students from Tigard to PCC and Barber Transit Center. This is in addition to the normal bus service that, that would be planned for the region, but it would have that efficient connection. The other one we are looking at is a connection on Southwest 53rd from a station at 53rd. And as I note, we would be improving 53rd. We would be improving 53rd because like so many of our streets in Southwest, it is a gravel road, a hilly gravel road at that, and it's a quarter mile to the edge of campus, all uphill if you'd be coming from the transit station, and another quarter mile to get into the heart of campus. We have a park that adjoins it, there's Southwest Trails access through there, and, and our project wants to improve this street with pavement and sidewalks and streetlights and all the things that make it safe and comfortable for somebody walking or cycling, and also provide that connectivity for the neighborhood and potential use by a shuttle. We have every intention, however, of retaining the gate that is currently at the end of where, kind of where the PCC campus line is on the map on the right. There's currently a gate that prevents vehicular traffic from going through. Another thing we'll be doing is taking in-
But a shuttle would go through, I presume?
Yeah, the shuttle would, yes, the shuttle would go through.
The PCC master plan doesn't allow vehicular access at that point, so how would that be dealt with?
So, oh, that's good.
With the new comprehensive plan that the council adopted last year, we've shifted and rezoned the campuses so that the master plan sunsets in the next couple of years, so it's been replaced with a, with new zoning that has been applied to those campuses. Significant new development on the campuses would trigger a new transportation impact review, which is, would enable a discussion of circulation and traffic. So if we, if we tried to open that up for general vehicle traffic, that certainly would be a legit issue to discuss during that review, but, so it doesn't preclude a discussion of that in the future, but the, what the campus master plan says may not preclude
That's really distressing because there was a big public process to decide where access to PCC would happen and to learn that as part of the comprehensive plan it's gone away is unfortunate.
So with regards to park and rides, we looked at basically every place we could think of to put a park and ride. We wanted to identify every place that might be suitable because it gives us the biggest, the biggest amount of information on potential impacts. And now the next step is to go through and right-size those, those park and rides, and there are a number of factors that we'll be going through. This evaluation is one of our early steps. And here are the locations that are in the environmental impact statement, the places that we identified. They're spread throughout the alignment, which was something actually that was very important to Portland, that, that we were able to capture people throughout the line. So this had demonstrated seven possible sites and over 4,000 spaces, but you can see some of them have like 50 or 100. We've got a lot of work to do to figure out what the right number is and the right place. So park and rides in Portland, on the lower right is a, is a concept perhaps around Southwest 53rd, but on the left are the types of things that we will be looking at. How do those stations lay out? How good is the bus connectivity? How many spaces should we provide? How do people access it? And what is their potential for transit-oriented development or TOD? So this is a, a, one sketch, a concept that could happen at Southwest 53rd. On the right in blue is a park and ride structure, a structured lot that could serve up to 900 vehicles. In the center would be, we're imagining some sort of plaza, perhaps where drop-off can happen, perhaps where a shuttle could be, perhaps where the bike station would be. And then the brown squares on the left are, just at our initial take, opportunities for, for transit-oriented development such as housing. This is a rendering of the Barber Transit Center, our other location for park and ride consideration. It too is reflecting a little bit of a concept about the West Portland Town Center in the future, and we would envision this place if it continues to serve as a park and ride and a bus hub to have development that better serves the community. So we're up to a lot of work. In addition to those elements that I've talked about, we are proceeding with the jurisdictional transfer of the highway, as I mentioned. Metro has a heavy lift to complete the historic and cultural resources evaluations, which actually go beyond the end of the FEIS period to satisfy state law. And Metro will be establishing a land use final order, or a LOFO. And this is a single land use action for this particular project, just as we have had on all other light rail projects, and it expedites the appeal process when someone, when someone has reason to appeal a land use action. It circumvents some of the places so they can get directly to LUBA. Yeah?
Land Use Board of Appeals.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
And LOFO is?
Land, land use final order. So the LOFO defines the locations that the project is going to be located in, and it, it does nothing to eliminate our local land use approvals and permits. What I can tell you is, is the orange line, in Portland alone, we issued over 100 permits, I'm kind of embarrassed to say, land- I'm kind of embarrassed to say, land use actions, type twos, type threes, design commission, landmarks commission. It, and we ended up with a beautiful product. The mall in front of landmarks and design commission also went through its own land use processes. And I, I'm aware that there are concerns that the LOFO might preclude us from having the type of facilities that we want to have on this project. And I feel very confident, for what it's worth, that it does not preclude. I think we've got beautiful systems that demonstrate that.
So how does that, I'm sorry, just how does that work when we haven't decided some of the alignments?
So, so the, the alignments will ultimately be based on what the steering committee adopts throughout this next process. We, we've done an initial take on it, and it sets a broad frame for the entirety of the project.
Well, and, and just to add to that, Teresa, the, just about every one of these land use final orders for other projects in the past have also been amended. The Metro Council can amend the LOFO to be consistent with the project. The project really defines the land use final order area, and it's likely to be amended at either the, the end of the final environmental impact statement, when more decisions about the project have been made, potentially again at the time of a final funding agreement, grant, final funding grant agreement with the Federal Transit Administration to be sure that the land use final order is in compliance with, you know, is only defining the area of the project that, that the region is building.
Thank you. That's helpful. One of the concerns I've heard from community members is that community members can't partici, no longer have sta, will not have standing unless that they have participated prior to November 15th. Is that, I'm assuming you shake your head?
Not true. So we will be going through, if you want, there's a hearing on November 15th. You should, I'm not, everybody should be aware of that. But once we, we're not constructing anything until probably 2023. As we do, we will come in for the same local land use applications, the approvals, and that does not circumvent that process at all. And we've proven that over and over and over. Design Commission, we have lots of testimony. They weigh the factors, they come to a decision, it moves on.
Then that would get appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals, and my understanding is that the LOFO goes to the Land Conservation and Development Commission?
Not exactly right. First thing, if, if someone thought that, based on the preponderance of information, that the Design Commission failed to acknowledge something, they would first appeal it to City Council, you get a chance. After that, if City Council, someone wanted to appeal that, it would go straight to the Land Use Board of Appeals. So it doesn't go through all the other steps, doesn't end up at the State Supreme Court.
But is the Land, Development, Land Conservation and Development Commission involved at all?
The Land Use Conservation and Development Commission adopted 13 criteria last year that are based on your comprehensive plans, City of Tigard comprehensive plan, Tuolitan, that the, the decision that Metro will make is based on. So there are probably, there are findings that says the alignment that the steering committee said move forward with, this is what we think the project is, they are weighed against those 13 criteria for the land use action.
Okay. I do want to get to public testimony, but, and I'll have time before November 15th, but it does seem to me that some of those criteria are still pending. We haven't done some of the impacts or traffic analysis. But we can discuss that later. Thank you.
So yeah, Teresa, how much longer do we?
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have very much left. So I'll just say, so here's some information on historic resources, a lot of work left to do. Today, you'll be asked to accept, adopt the preferred alignment and direct the project team through TriMet to create a conceptual design report, address issues raised, implement the Ross Island Bridgehead process outlined in the memorandum of understanding, tell us to work on developing the local match financing strategy, and have concurrent reports on affordable housing and our progress toward meeting those goals. With that, we are ready for invited testimony.
Okay, we are going to take a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Come on, Dan, bring some, bring some order to this place.
Okay, we are, Mayor Wheeler is ill, but he wants to, he wants to listen by phone, and so we need a motion pursuant to PCC code 3.02.025. He will be presenting by phone. And I need to ask if any member of the board has an objection to that. Okay, no one objects, so welcome Mayor Wheeler.
I move that he be allowed to do that.
Second?
Okay. He is going to do that then.
Mary, there?
Okay, great. Okay, so now we have some invited, a couple invited panels?
Yes, we do. So we chose to bring in the educational institutions and the, the hospital and the VA. Because they represent thousands of people, we, we have also ample opportunity for public testimony, many of the people in the room. So I'd like to call Dr. David-
Okay, so I am going to exercise my prerogative as the presiding officer to limit the guest to three minutes each. Okay.
We already have them at two, but-
Oh, you have them at two?
I moved it, I moved it-
What a bad negotiator I am.
I moved it, no, I actually had moved it back up to three.
Carla, can I?
No, two's fine.
Can I ask, Carla, how many members of the public have signed up to testify?
We have 18.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Dr. David Slike, Rebecca Aukin and Jason Franklin, please, if you'll come up.
When are we going to move the substitute?
After this.
After, after this, yeah. Welcome, and if you could just give us your name, and you have two minutes.
Aw, not three?
Not three, two.
Two's fine. Mayor Wheeler, we hope you're on the mend. City Commissioners, my name is David Slike, I'm the President of National University of Natural Medicine, South Portland. NU&amp;M, NU&amp;M used to be called NC&amp;M. We support the Southwest Corridor Light Rail Project and the Barber Boulevard alignment, and we believe that light rail in our area will greatly improve access to our medical school, which is growing prodigiously to our clinic and to the Health Guard Research Center, which is also growing in South Portland. So as the city grows and we grow, light rail on Barber alone will not solve the increasingly dangerous traffic problems surrounding our campus, which is worth noting. NU&amp;M has worked with PBOT and Metro and ODOT for over 11 years to address safety and access concerns and issues caused by the heavy and fast-moving traffic that completely surrounds our campus footprint, particularly on NATO to our west and the Ross Island Bridge to our east. We're an island surrounded by highways, essentially. Thus, NU&amp;M urges you to support the Southwest Corridor Bridgehead Project in particular, which if approved and funded, would finally fix the increasing congestion of bridge commuter traffic buildup on Kelly and Water, as well as vastly improving NATO with traffic calming solutions, all of which are directly adjacent to our university property. These proposed improvements to South Portland have been needed for many years, and the Bridgehead Reconfiguration Project offers an opportunity. Did we lose the mayor?
Apparently the mayor didn't find you very persuasive.
Go ahead and, he'll, he'll be back.
If he's got the flu, we have solutions. These proposed improvements to South Portland have been needed for many years, and the Bridgehead Reconfiguration Project offers an opportunity to fix longstanding traffic problems in our area and greatly improve safety and access, as I mentioned, for our students, but also for our patients, and of course for our faculty and staff. We have now more than 20,000 patient visits to our clinic annually, and that's growing, all of whom come from all over the city. Having said that, however, it's really important to the future of NU&amp;M in South Portland that the city of Portland and the Southwest Corridor planners are aware of the critical impacts to our campus due to likely property acquisitions that would attend for the Bridgehead Reconfiguration Project. These property acquisitions-
Your, your 30 seconds over.
Oops.
Am I reading that right, Carla?
Yes, that's correct.
We, we get your, we get the gist.
All right, thank you.
We won't forget NU&amp;M. Yes, if you could give us your name, and you have two minutes.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor, I guess I don't know anymore, but members of the City Council, I'm Jason Franklin, I'm the Director of Campus Planning and Design at Portland State. I just want to say PSU fully supports the construction of new light rail along the Southwest Corridor, and as one of the largest generators of trips in downtown, we think it's vitally important that the region continues to expand light rail and access to serve both downtown and Portland State. PSU students, faculty and staff rely heavily on transit to make trips to and from campus. Currently, over 53% of our students make trips on transit, and most of those are Macs. And so anytime you go, you just notice how many people are using Macs and, at the PSU campus. As PSU grows and becomes more diverse, and as we strive to keep the cost of attending PSU low, continuing to improve transit access to campus is a must. As housing costs continue to escalate, PSU students are living farther and farther from campus, and fast, reliable transit to campus is essential to reduce their overall costs and the stress of traveling to campus. Excellent transit service allows us to continue to reduce the amount of parking we provide on campus, and in fact, the new Fourth Montgomery Building that the city is participating in has no parking in it, and we're replacing a surface lot to build this building. Managing parking allows us to manage trips downtown, reducing congestion and freeing up space on campus for other uses. PSU shares the city's commitment to climate action, and our own climate plan requires us to become carbon neutral by 2040. We will only achieve this goal by continuing to improve the regional transit system and in particularly new light rail corridors that provide reliable and fast transit. As the city and PSU continue to grow, new dedicated transit corridors are perhaps the most significant method to mitigate congestion and meet our environmental goals. PSU recognizes that there are many details to be worked out about how a new light rail line will enter downtown and serve PSU, but we're ready to continue our collaboration with the city and TriMet and others to develop the best solutions to serve our growing community. Our urge you to vote to move this project forward and complete the light rail network that is important to our city and PSU.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler, members of the council. My name is Rebecca Aukin, Planning Manager for Portland Community College, here this afternoon to voice PCC support for the Southwest Corridor Alignment and Equitable Housing Strategy. PCC is the largest higher ed institution in the state with a current enrollment of more than 73,000 full and part-time students. Our Sylvania campus is the largest of our four campuses and located along the Southwest Corridor. Since its founding in 1968, we have seen the area become more economically and culturally diverse. Many of the almost 25,000 students who attend the Sylvania campus live in or near the Southwest Corridor. Access to our campuses is key to student success. Our latest surveys show that we have 30% of our students using public transit as their primary mode of travel. With the proposed light rail extension, we anticipate that figure increasing, not only in student ridership, but for our staff as well. Additionally, we appreciate the inclusion of an affordable housing strategy in the corridor planning. Recent studies have shown that about half of community college students experience housing insecurity, and 13 to 14% experience homelessness. The Equitable Housing Strategy is an opportunity to meet the basic needs of our students and their families so they can better focus on their academic success. PCC does realize that there are some segments of the light rail alignment that are not yet confirmed. The college is committed to continuing to work with city, Metro, TriMet and others to help determine the best alignment, keeping the needs of our students at the forefront. Lastly, as Sylvania campus is located in a predominantly residential neighborhood, we are sensitive to the possible impacts the proposed light rail extension may have on the campus and areas adjacent to it. As such, the college will continue its campus planning efforts, incorporating broad public participation, with particular attention paid to our immediate- participation, with particular attention paid to our immediate neighbors. Southwest Corridor Light Rail Extension and the Equitable Housing Strategy is needed, and done well will have far-reaching benefits for PCC and the region. Thank you.
Thank you all. Next panel?
Next up will be Margot Maccaverna and Michael Harrison and Matt Hilton, who I am told are going to split their time.
Very good, very good.
Brief statement.
Sure, Mayor.
So, I want to apologize for getting up and leaving. I have a cold, and I don't want to run the risk of giving it to my colleagues. I'm also monitoring a situation outside of City Hall, so I hope everybody forgives me, but I am paying attention, I'm watching it on TV, and I am listening via phone.
That's the giant mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
I get a picture of that.
Okay.
Darn it.
Okay, who wants to start?
Good afternoon, my name is Margot Maccaverna, and I serve as a strategic planner at the VA Portland Healthcare System. Thank you for inviting me. First and-
I'm sorry, just get the clocks set, okay, go ahead.
I got extra time. First and foremost, I would like to express that the VA Portland Healthcare System strongly supports this project. We appreciate the continued invitations to participate in working on the details of this project that are important to our mission to serve the veterans. This project will increase transit solutions and improve the commute for VA employees. We currently have about nine hundred parking spaces on our campus and approximately three thousand employees. The VA pays one hundred percent of the transit passes for our employees. While this project will be an amazing improvement for our workforce, Trimet and PBOT have assured the VA that this will not result in any reduction of front-door bus service for our veterans. The veterans greatly use and rely on front-door bus service to get to their healthcare appointments, and they are our number-one mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, gentlemen?
Good afternoon, my name's Michael Harrison, I'm the Director of Government and Neighborhood Relations at OHSU. Thanks so much for the opportunity to speak today. A lot of people sort of have asked early on, especially in the neighborhood, well, would OHSU employees even use the light rail in the Markham Hill Connector of was built? It's a very appropriate question. My answer today is absolutely. The Southwest Barber Light Rail Project is an extension of the existing Green Line, as Commissioner Fritz pointed out, a line that travels past the homes of OHSU employees who live in places like Lentz, Gateway, Hollywood, through downtown, and obviously the line would continue deep into southwest Portland and into Tigard. Our employees are like anyone else. If they can spend more time with their families rather than spend time stuck on a bus in congested traffic or waiting to transfer buses, of course they're gonna choose that option. We currently have employees who take the Orange Line from Milwaukee, walk a third of a mile to the tram, take the tram up to OHSU, and then continue to walking to their destination, folks who could transfer to the Number Eight instead. So, I think sort of the proof is in the pudding already with existing infrastructure.
Members of the Portland City Council, hi there. My name is Matt Hilton, I'm the President of ASME Local 328, and I'm happy to address you today. Our membership has not really taken a position about a connector, but I'd like to advocate as to why transit's so important for us. Our local represents about forty percent of the overall OHSU workforce, which is about sixty-five hundred people. If you're not a physician, if you're not a nurse, if you're not in research, odds are you're in a bargaining unit. I think why transit is so important to our community is an example, OHSU is the academic medical center for the state, is viewed with a lot of prestige for top-notch quality care, be it a godlike surgeon, or a case management team that will guarantee the absolute best of care. Where the rub is, is regardless of why you've been admitted, if you're in a room that has not been thoroughly sterilized and cleaned by our environmental services technician, you could get infection that's just as bad as what put you in the hospital in the first place. We recently did a study of our membership, and we found that thirty-one percent live ten to twenty miles away from OHSU. An additional seventeen percent live as much as twenty to fifty miles away from OHSU. Out of that number, the sixty-five hundred, forty-five percent use transit as their primary means to get to work. This is really important that we get more transit options, so that we continue to serve the community and give you guys the care that you deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for Michael Harrison, if I could, Mr. President. I just want to be clear about something, because I'm a high-frequency user of OHSU, and frankly, I'm not allowed in the emergency room because of my compromised immune system. But I get regular care up there, and it's a non, I mean, so it's a non-starter for me to consider this investment and not have some kind of connector. Are we talking about looking at alternatives here with Twilliger Parkway that either go above or below in terms of additional options? Is that what's on the table?
Probably the question maybe would be better for city staff or Trimet.
Yes.
That's all I needed. That's all I needed, thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Okay, so, Commissioner Daley, you have a substitute you wish to offer?
Yeah, I want, I'll move to accept the substitute, Exhibit C, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. So, we're gonna put a substitute on the table, and there'll be some amendments also on the table, and then we'll take public testimony on those. Excuse me, so it's been moved and seconded to adopt the substitute for Exhibit C, so please call the roll.
Are you-
We can do, we can go on Exhibit C, because it's just putting the substitute on the table.
Yeah, we're just putting it on the table.
Got it. U. Daley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye.
Okay, substitute C is before us.
Then I have some proposed amendments to Exhibit C, and the changes that we just put on the table for Exhibit C are things that Commissioner U. Daley's staff and mine have been working on since the work session, mostly to clarify the intent of things. And so I have a few more, which I'd like to get moved and seconded, Mr. President, and then hear testimony before deciding whether or not to move forward with them.
Okay.
The first one, which is Fritz' one, is a change to three A in Exhibit C. It states, "Currently, the city of Portland understands this steering committee recommendation to optimize the layout of the Barber Transit Center site for transit operations and redevelopment potential. However, the city's land use scores would be best served by elimination of park-and-ride facilities at Barber Transit Center." My proposed amendment is to eliminate that, to delete that sentence, "However, the city's land use scores would be best served by elimination of park-and-ride facilities at Barber Transit Center," and to add, "However, the West Portland Town Center planning process should determine the appropriateness and capacity of a park-and-ride facility at Barber Transit Center."
Okay, that's the motion. Is there a second?
I have a question. Normally, when we work out a substitute, we don't have amendments, and so I'd like to know what the sponsor feels of each of these amendments, what her position is, and I have additional questions on the amendments, just so I understand them.
Commissioner, we didn't have to leave, I'm out of time, so-
I'd still like to hear from the sponsor as to what her position is.
I'm-
Okay, well, I will, for the purposes of discussion, I will second the amendment.
And as, thank you, Mr. President, and I may even-
Go through all your amendments, and then we'll hear from Commissioner Daley, and then we'll-
Yeah, as I mentioned before I started this process, I may withdraw some of these anyway after I hear public testimony. And so the second one I handed out is actually moot, because it's already included in Exhibit C, and that is to have invited testimony at each of the work sessions to discuss the crossroads, Markham Hill, and the Fifty-third Avenue Park-and-Ride. So, we don't need that one. Amendment, I'll keep calling it three, because it's on the list here. And this is a very minor amendment, the, well, actually it's not, it's a minor one and a major. This is about the connection between Fifty-third Avenue Station, whether or not it has a park-and-ride, and the PCC campus, and it reflects the conversation I had earlier with Eric Engstrom about the current master plan, says there should not be a vehicular entrance at Fifty-third. And so regarding that, it's seven G, the city's, what it currently says is, "The city supports publicly-funded street improvements to Southwest Fifty-third Avenue between the light rail station at Southwest Fifty-third and the PCC campus to facilitate inviting pedestrian and bicycling access to the campus. These street improvements should be appropriately scaled to the neighborhood environment and will, and I would say should, not provide private vehicle, vehicular traffic connection to the campus." And I would, this amendment would delete the word "private," so it would say it should not provide vehicular traffic connection to the campus.
Okay, and are you, that would be, the shuttle would be exempt from that, I assume? Vehicular traffic?
It wouldn't be, it could go to the edge of the campus, but it couldn't, it wouldn't actually go through.
Okay, I'll second again for purposes of discussion.
Thank you. Fritz' four is about the Sixty-eighth Avenue Station, and this is a new one that I, which just came to my attention through testimony this morning. Although this station is physically located in the city of Tigard, it also serves residents of the city of Portland and will be included in the evaluation for the PCC campus shuttle. Portland staff should collaborate with the city of Tigard in planning for this station area.
Okay, I will second that for purposes of discussion.
I'm sorry, that, and then there's two further pieces of it, but thank you.
I'll second it.
The alignment between the station at Fifty-third and Sixty-eighth should include bicycle and pedestrian facilities on the light rail structure that will cross I-5 between Sixtieth and Sixty-fourth and Barber, and pedestrian and bicycle facilities must be improved to allow Portland residents to access the station at Southwest Sixty-eighth safely. Thank you for seconding that. And then another couple of minor ones, and number, under other priority actions, this is Fritz's number five, historic, add number three, historic landmarks review, continue coordination with the city of Portland's Historic Landmarks Commission, where detailed alignment decisions may impact historic or contributing resources.
Yeah, I will second for purposes of discussion.
Thank you. And the final one is Fritz's six, this is to Exhibit C, about affordable, locally-owned businesses. The light rail, it says currently, "The light rail project should promote preservation and commercial viability of commercial and office businesses, especially those serving nearby residents, providing family-raised jobs, add grocery stores, and other locally-owned businesses." So, adding grocery stores.
Okay, I will second that for purposes of discussion.
Thank you. And my final amendment is an amendment to the resolution, and that's to add a further, be it further resolved, and this is the one that I'm most unsure about whether we should actually do this or not, but I want to put it on the table anyway, so we can take testimony on it. Be it further resolved, the Portland City Council asks the Metro Council not to adopt the land use final order for this project until after the council has held the work sessions on crucial decisions described in Exhibit C.
Okay, again, I'll second for purposes of discussion.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate that.
Okay, are there any other amendments to put on the table? Okay, none? Commissioner Daley?
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Fritz, for your attention to this item. I want to assure you that we took all of them into consideration, and as you know, we incorporated several of them. However, many of the amendments were not deemed appropriate to place in this document because they're too prescriptive. There are many decisions yet to make, and many other parties that have a say in these decisions. But even though we can't address all of your concerns here, we will have opportunities to discuss them in detail in future work sessions with the council, and I want to personally promise to take your concerns seriously and bring them to the steering committee. Thank you.
Okay, so now we will move to public testimony, and I think, again, we're gonna limit testimony to two minutes, and we will, Carla can call people in three at a time.
Yes, the first-
Oh, okay. Chris Smith from the Planning Commission will kick things off.
Good afternoon, Chris Smith, Vice Chair of the Portland Planning and Sustainability Commission, conveying the commission's recommendation. You have our letter. To be brief, I'll just hit a few key points. First is that the equitable housing strategy is critical, and we urge you to fund it early and deeply. Second, that there has been considerable land use planning already for this corridor in both the Barber Concept Plan and the Comp Plan, and there will be more. We will have station area planning exercises to go through. I would emphasize with respect to the PCC connection that the commission supports a strong shuttle, bicycle, and ped connection. So, Commissioner Fritz, I'd ask you to make sure that your prohibition on vehicles doesn't include bicycles, because bicycles are considered vehicles in some parts of the code, so if you could make sure you make that distinction. And with respect to the park-and-rides in West Portland Town Center, I would remind council that both the Region 2040 Plan and our Comp Plan envision town centers as vibrant, active places for people. Whether or not large amounts of parking are compatible with that is something you should carefully consider. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Carla, please call the first three.
R. Terry Parker, R.A. Fontes, and Doug Klotz.
Yeah, I said that. Did you want me to? So, I think most of you have been here before, you know the drill. Give us your name, and then you have two minutes each, and there's a clock in front of you. So, we'll start with Doug.
Hi, Doug Klotz. Three years ago, Trimet opened the Orange Line MAX route. BPS had done station area planning, such as Chris mentions. They asked for community input, and in some areas, folks didn't want any upzoning near stations near them. So, those weren't upzoned. As a result, we have situations like Seventeenth and Rhine and Seventeenth and Holgate stations, which have R-five zoning within a hundred and fifty feet of the stations, and the ridership counts show the folly of this approach. Today, these two stations are the second lowest and the tenth lowest out of the ninety-seven station, light rail stations on the MAX system, because there's only some single-family houses there. So, we know on Southwest Corridor, we must protect the affordable apartments and housing that exists there, and we have plans in the equitable housing strategy and with the bond to do more new apartments that are affordable as well. But we must make sure that we have room for all the new apartments and other forms of housing, and market rate as well near the MAX stations, including the Barber Transit and Fifty-third MAX station, and I would say that the housing should take priority over parking. And this is a climate issue as well. We need to take the opportunity now, at this point in history, to do the best job we can to get people out of their cars and taking transit instead, and putting a lot of housing near the light rail stations is one way to do that. So, I would say you, I would, hopefully you could direct BPS to start working now on rezoning all the land within a half-mile walking distance of all the stations, to the, consistent with the equitable housing strategy, to get the higher enough density of housing there that you could really do the job. I also note that in a quarter-mile radius around the station, there's lots of hills and missing streets. We need to work on connecting streets through, putting stairs and ramps where there's a great difference, and also even a couple of pedestrian bridges over I-5, where it would round out the circle around the station. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry?
Yeah, Terry Parker, fourth-generation Portlander. When the light rail line was built between Portland and Gresham was being considered as one of several options in the nineteen-seventies, I chaired the first and original Citizens Advisory Committee in the region for a transportation project of this magnitude. One of the strongest recommendations from the committee was to take as little private property as possible. The Southwest Corridor project should follow suit with the same type of guidelines to take as little property, private property as possible. When the Gresham MAX line was constructed, grading and overpass construction costs were shared with improvements with the Banfield Freeway. Sidewalks and park-and-ride lots were added adjacent to the alignment. If built, the Southwest Corridor should also be a bare-bones project, as opposed to a Rolls-Royce-type project that includes extended fingers of infrastructure. Any changes to the Ross Island Bridgehead and NATO Parkway must increase motor vehicle capacity and significantly reduce congestion, not create more of it. The biggest issue with the Southwest Corridor is the price tag. Nearly three billion for infrastructure plus another one-point-five billion to subsidize affordable housing, some of which will likely be property taken and removed from the tax rolls. The proposed bond measures that in part rely upon residential property taxes to pay off the bonds will unjustly increase the cost of housing for the entire region. The Gresham MAX line was paid for with Mount Hood Freeway dollars. Equity for motorists was achieved with an upgrade to I-84. Fifty percent of the funding for the new MAX line is expected to come from the federal tax on motor fuels through the Highway Trust Fund. Maintaining two full-service motor vehicle travel lanes in both direction on Barber Boulevard must be a priority. Equity and CAC representation for stakeholder motorists is a must-do. Currently, transit fares barely cover twenty-five percent of the operating cost. The riders are subsidized system-wide at sixty-five cents per passenger mile. The tax and fee structure for Portland's transportation infrastructure is totally upside down as it relates to the privilege rankings in the comprehensive mode hierarchy plan. Equity requires transit fares be increased whereby the riders share a substantial financial share for the construction, infrastructure costs. Adult bicyclists need to be assessed, a license and user fee to pay for- to pay for bicycle infrastructure, and OSHU needs to pay for its own connection for transit. The entire project needs a clear and transparent, non-juggled cost spend of better analysis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, R.A. Fontes. It's just too late for more light rail, you have your flyer out here. Metro staff consistently overestimates ridership on major transportation projects. MAXes fail to be cost-effective over thirty-two years of operation. They're running with less than a busload at any one time. These are all documented on your flyer. Automating transit vehicles will make buses cheaper to operate relative to rail. Operation, operator costs, driver costs are about sixty percent of bus costs, but only about twenty percent of light rail. Eliminating with vehicle automation, buses become cheaper than, yeah, a lot cheaper than light rail. Self-driving taxi-like services are set to make a big chunk of transit ridership. If you look on the reverse side of your handout, please, it has a report from consultants Fair and Peers, who were involved with the, with the state later, report. And you'll notice that most of their models suggest that we'll have a drop in ridership of about thirty to thirty-five percent, up to eighty-two percent on light rail. So, now I just, I'm sorry, I've just got so much stuff in here, just have to go ahead. But anyway, it's just simply time to get rid of light rail if you want to have transit that works in the future. We cannot be wasting any more time on it. It'll become just like streetcar and west, and in the long run, unaffordable. The sooner we stop building more rail, streetcar or light rail, and go to realizing it's going to be rubber tire, the sooner we can have transit that works for everybody in the future.
Thank you all. Next three.
Our Tony Hanson, Mary Ann Fitzgerald, and Evelyn Murphy.
Welcome. Again, you each have, just give us your name for the record, and you each have two minutes, and we'll start with you, Mr. Hanson.
All right, and then I'll have to take off, I have a four o'clock meeting. Hi, my name is Tony Hanson. I'm president of Crestwood Neighborhood Association. We submitted written testimony on October eighth, two thousand and eighteen. This highlights our main points. First, we are excited the light rail is coming through our neighborhood. However, Crestwood believes the Southwest Corridor locally preferred alternative, the LPA, lacks the vision to support projected growth in our region. We agree with the Portland Planning and Sustainability Commission's July two thousand and eighteen comments that the DES prioritized motor vehicle movement over people movement, particularly in the vicinity of West Portland Crossroads. These are a few of the issues, concerns, and recommendations relative to the Southwest Corridor LPA. We ask that you not accept the LPA in Exhibit A and B, support Alignment B-one, Center Barber, or if you must, the Unrefined Alignment B-two. Reject Refinement Two, the Taylor's Ferry overcrossing. It sounds like that's already happened, so we're very excited, thank you. And amend Refinement Four, the Barber undercrossing. Specifically, we want to keep light rail on Barber throughout Southwest Portland. Alignment B-one. The current crossroads is dominated by motor vehicle traffic and has a long list of safety issues. Rebuilding crossroads was called for in the Barber Concept Plan and offers many benefits, such as a more direct route with a full-minute faster travel time that translates into increased ridership. Earthquake resilience for a key connection over I five, and safer walking and bicycling infrastructure that best supports the Barber Concept Plan to make West Portland a more people-friendly town center. Staff has rejected B-one because of cost and constructability concerns without a full comparison of costs and benefits in the LPA. Our second preference is Alignment B-two without Refinement Two, the Taylor's Ferry refinement. And it sounds like that's what's happening, so we appreciate that. Specifically, get rid of Taylor's Ferry alignment. We would like to amend Refinement Four, the Barber undercrossing, that's at the other end of our neighborhood towards Tigard, to continue the alignment at grade within the city of Portland and add sidewalks and bike lanes to the light rail structure over I five as there's no bike lanes on the existing Barber motor structure over I five. No matter what, the Southwest Corridor Light Rail Plan must have better pedestrian bike infrastructure to access transit from our neighborhood to the proposed stations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann?
Thank you very much. My name is Mary Ann Fitzgerald, and I happen to be the Vice President of Crestwood Neighborhood. So rather than echoing a lot of Tony's testimony, I'll just say thumbs up to what he said. We are hesitant to accept the locally preferred alternative in Attachments A and B because it has some flaws in it. In particular, well, we think that staff did a great job of incorporating comments into the work plan, but there are some things that are being taken off the table. And B-one Barber is our opportunity to improve the walkability within our neighborhood. And we're afraid, you know, so, so the flyover of B-two does less harm. The Taylor's Ferry alignment was just awful. It would have really precluded future improvements. So we're very pleased to know that that's off the table. Crestwood did not submit testimony, but I'm also a little concerned about the NATO alignment. And we talk a lot about access to OHSU and Markham Hill, but we never talk about access to South Waterfront. And really, you have to balance both. And as you go through the LPA, there's not a full cost benefit analysis. And I think that we need more work on the Barber-NATO alignment and the crossroads area before we lock ourselves into the alignments that are chosen in the locally preferred alternative. We do want the crossroads to be a walkable town center. It's not. And while we're glad that there will be sidewalk and bike improvements on Barber, they stop at the Barber Transit Center. Entire neighborhood will not get any sidewalks and bike paths out of this project. So we are really advocating that the staff take a good look at the shared investment strategy and figure out how we can get access to each of the transit centers. The ones at Fifty-Third and Barber Transit and at Sixty-Eighth are the ones that would affect our community, but there are others throughout the Barber Corridor where we need access from the local neighborhoods out to the transit centers. So these walking and biking infrastructure are really key to making this a success. And thank you very much for listening to our comments today.
Thank you.
My name is Evelyn Murphy. I'm a resident of Tigard and work in Portland at OHSU. And I probably don't need to say this, but I will anyway. I do not represent OHSU in, in any way. Although I have worked there for now thirty years, and as such, I am an expert on commuting. I, because of this, I was asked to be on the Southwest Corridor Citizen Advisory Committee that finished its work not too long ago. I don't speak as an expert. I speak as a citizen and a stepmother and a woman who is closer to the end of her life than the beginning and for the next generation. I hear often and often from my friends in Tigard about the expense and disruption that will be, will come to us with building Southwest Light Rail. And they're right. It's going to be expensive, and it's going to be disruptive. The hard truth is, it will never, ever be any less expensive and disruptive than it is, than it will be if we move today. Our society is foolish. We react rather than proact, unlike some places in Europe, where I've learned when major roadways are developed, rails are laid at the time they're built so that when the time comes, more efficient transportation can be, can be upgraded. I applaud this work and the hard work that everyone has done in developing this project. And I and many of the people I know support it and welcome it, and we'll do everything we can to help you make it possible. Thank you.
Thank you for your service on the Citizens Advisory Committee, too. Thank you all. Next three.
Our Wayne Stewart, Susan Egner, and Len Michonne.
Welcome, and again, just, we need your name for the record, and you each have two minutes. And I'm going to start over this end this time. Just a little right here.
I'm Wayne Stewart. I served on the Design Commission for about ten years and chaired it for three in the past time. This is regards to the Barber to Markham Hill connection. And as I've often heard from my wife, who's a retired nurse, first, do no harm. The Twiliger Parkway is an important cultural and historic asset for the city. And it was first envisioned by the Olmstead Brothers, a nationally known landscape architectural firm in the early nineteen hundreds. They prepared the nineteen oh-three plan for the city of Portland. And like Boston's Emerald Necklace, the Twiliger Parkway was proposed as an integral part of a green, greenway or Parkway system across and around the city. This green by idea, as identified by the Olmstead, was called, they called it the Forty Mile Loop. And of course, as everyone knows, that's now grown and exceeds about a hundred and forty miles. And I've even seen a hundred and seventy-five listed at, at one point. Of all the park improvements proposed by the Olmstead Brothers, Twiliger Parkway most closely hews to the original nineteen oh-three plan. I think that's something very important in terms of its cultural landscape and certainly in the history. In nineteen eighty-three, the city council recognized the historic and cultural values of the Parkway and adopted the Twiliger Parkway Design Guidelines. Page one of these guidelines states, "Primary consideration shall be given to safeguarding unobstructed views and to preserve the heavily wooded character. Improvement shall make a minimal amount of interruption to the national topography." Of the four alternatives that are currently being considered for access, only the tunnel alternative, connection number two, will minimize impacts to the Twiliger Parkway. This alternative also provides the best weather protection for users and greatly simplifies access for mobility impaired individuals. Please adopt this alternative as the preferred Barber to Markham Hill connection.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah?
My name is Susan Egner, and the preceding speaker said a lot of the things I would say. I am speaking to the Markham Hill Connector and the proposed taking of Portland Parkland for it. There's no question, there needs to be a connector. The issue is, does Twiliger Parkway need to be permanently damaged to provide for it? When I moved to Portland thirty-one years ago, I didn't know anything about Twiliger Parkway, even though it was out my back door. I learned a lot. I learned that the city of Portland, over and over and over again, has emphasized how important this unique linear park is to the life of the city. From the initial design through the opening in nineteen twelve, the Twiliger Parkway Design Guidelines, which the predecessor spoke to. And in twenty twelve, the city supported the Twiliger Centennial. Some of you attended. And again, in twenty thirteen, the city demonstrated its support for the Parkway with its purchase of Eagle Point to help complete the original design. This is a legacy of our city's care for the unique assets. The four choices all cede Portland Public Parkway Parks to TriMet. Perhaps that's one way for the city to get out from under the requirements of its own laws governing Twiliger Parkway. The tunnel option does seem to be the most preferable. I see no need, however, for the Parks Bureau to cede any land to TriMet so that the tunnel could be built. I would ask that any damage to the Parkway caused by building the connector be repaired as part of the process. Shrubs and trees planted again under the aegis of the Parks Bureau. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler and council members. My name is Len Michonne. I'm here as president of the South Portland Neighborhood Association, the SPNA. The Southwest Corridor Light Rail Project is significant to the city of Portland and other jurisdictions within the metro area. The SPNA unanimously endorses the Southwest Corridor Preferred Alternative on Barber Avenue, together with the reconstruction of the Ross Island Bridgehead and NATO Parkway. South Portland Neighborhood includes historic Lair Hill, John's Landing, and South Waterfront. We're currently involved in several city projects. Number one, the river plan, south reach of the Willamette River, with long-term projected benefits for the Greenway and development between Ross Island and Dunthorpe District. Zero Addressing Project, which will eliminate the leading zero and addresses west, east of NATO, with significant benefits to the delivery of emergency services, but with the cost to residents and businesses impacted. And a rewrite, rewrite of the nineteen eighty South Portland National Historic District Guidelines, which will reflect current design review practices and is being done in conjunction with the regional commitment to move forward with the reconstruction of the west end of the Ross Island Bridge. Beyond that, South Portland has challenges. Significant traffic congestion throughout the neighborhood with inherent problems of resident safety, with impatient drivers and excess pollution created by the idling of cars, unfiltered diesel exhaust and buses, and delivery long-haul trucks. Lair Hill District is inundated with commuter traffic attempting to enter the Ross Island Bridge through Corbett and Kelly Avenues, which are not designed as for high volume. As a result, the wayfinding web-based apps which assist commuters stuck in incessant, incessant delays from north Bond NATO to the bridge. The South Waterfront District is missing a major northbound, southwest Bond Avenue. With the construction of OHSU's CHH South and the Patient Housing Building, we will have considerable delays with regard to.
Okay. Time's up.
Okay. Let me just continue one more comment. We continue to be concerned with the potential transit-oriented development at, at the Gibbs Street. And I want to reiterate the SPNA's support for the Barber Concept Light Rail Project and high expectations the Ross Island Bridgehead will be fully addressed in the regional transportation bond funding tentatively scheduled for twenty twenty.
Okay.
Therefore, support the resolution before you today.
Thank you. Great, thank you all. Next three, please.
Our Marsha Leslie, Katie Dobler, and John Gibbon.
Okay, ma'am, would you like to start?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler, on the phone, and city council members. My name is Katie Dobler. I am the Chief Operations Officer at the Portland Clinic. The Portland Clinic, if you don't know, is locally owned by physicians and will be celebrating our hundredth anniversary in two thousand and twenty-one. Our five branches are located throughout the Tri-County area. And we are proponents of a quality mass transportation system, which includes a comprehensive light rail system. We recognize the cost of housing is skyrocketing, and longer commute strain our life balance. Public transportation is a key component in the growth of the metro area. We promote ridership by offering TriMet passes for our six hundred employees. I personally take light rail downtown from East County. We also know many of our ninety thousand patients depend on public transportation for daily commuting and to seek medical care at our clinics. We became directly involved in the Southwest Corridor Project when we learned that one of the proposed routes cut through our clinic in Tigard along I-five between Bonita Road and Carmen Drive. The loss of our building would have disrupted medical care for seven thousand patients, many of them seniors who live nearby in King County, King City and Summerfield. The ripple effects would have impacted many medical providers in the region who partner with us. The Portland Clinic is a member of the Coalition for Southwest MAX Railroad Options. We support the locally preferred alternative approved unanimously by the Southwest Corridor Steering Committee. Their recommendation includes the railroad route from downtown Tigard to Tualatin, which we support. Today, we encourage the council to join the Portland Clinic in supporting the Southwest Corridor Plan and locally preferred alternative. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would you like to go next, ma'am?
Okay. My name is Marsha Leslie. Written testimony was submitted on August thirtieth and also October eighth with details as to why Fifty-Third is the wrong choice for access to PCC. Contrary to what Teresa has stated, Fifty-Third is paved from Barber to Capitol Highway. I'm urging delay on the vote on ten sixty-two today until the new steering committee is appointed and can vote on the modified LPA. The direct LPA, or the current LPA, I should say, is not the one approved according to the state legislation guidelines for development of the Southwest Corridor Plan. The question has been raised as to whether the LPA is even legal according to that legislation. The LPA contradicts earlier statements by Metro, such as I-five options could not support. The LPA contradicts earlier statements by Metro, such as I-5 options could not support the Southwest Corridor land use vision, and yet the LPA from Barber Transit Center to Tigerd is along I-5. How does this support land use vision? Emphasis is being given in outer Portland not to the land use development and affordable housing, but on expanded parking on 53rd at the expense of the quiet neighborhood, which is far southwest. The majority of our crime occurs on the PCC Sylvany Campus, and we would prefer and we will actively oppose any efforts to open the campus at the fence at 53rd. Numerous fatal flaws exist in other areas of the LPA, and these need to be corrected before the city votes to approve this plan, which will shape and define southwest Portland for the next 50 years. Overall, the idea is good, the concept is good, but it needs a lot of work before it's acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
My name is John Gibbon. I'm a land use, I'm sorry. After 15 years, I'm no longer a land use representative for Markham, but I am their transportation representative and watershed committee representative. My comments today, though, are on my own behalf because Markham hasn't had a chance to meet since the meeting on the 29th. I can say that prior to that, that our support was basically for B2, because B2, the unrefined alternative, really gives us access, closest access on the west end using the current Barber Pedestrian Bridge. Takes us right into a station that's direct, as close to west Markham as you can get. It's not a great access. I spoke to you last month, and I told you I had to walk about a mile coming out of Markham on mostly unpaved, or not mostly unpaved streets, but certainly unsidewalked streets. And I have to report that one of my neighbors within the last 30 days was put in a nursing home for two months because she was hit in the intersection at 35th and Huber, where we need to do some traffic calming on 35th. So it's still not a good connection for us, but it is the closest one, B2. I support the LPA reluctantly, recognizing some of my neighbors have major problems with it, but it needs to be refined because, as proposed, the Collins Option is not included in what was presented as the LFO and the LPA at TriMet or at the steering committee. So Collins is not our preferred option because that puts the station the farthest away from west Markham. And I can answer questions about the crossroads, if you wish.
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you. Next three?
Our Bill Gary Falu, Miranda Bonnefield, and Phil Barrett.
We'll start with you, Bill. Just give us your name, and you have two minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Bill Gary Falu. My family owns the blocks between 17th and 19th and Barber Boulevard in southwest Portland that include the Golden Touch Restaurant, the Glen Alden Apartments, and the Olo Co-Working Office Building. We've been, we've done business in the area since my father and mother, Greek immigrants, opened the Golden Touch Restaurant back in the 1980s. I've been involved in neighborhood, community, and city efforts to improve the business environment along Barber Boulevard for over 20 years. In 1999, I participated in the citizens group that helped to develop the Barber Streetscape Plan, designed to construct sidewalk infill along the main arterials joining to Barber Boulevard and make this area more user-friendly for multimodal traffic. In 2013, I represented business interests in the development of the Barber Concept Plan that promoted public investment in high-capacity transit along the six-mile-long portion of the Boulevard. And in 2018, I was a member of the Community Advisory Committee that contributed to the Southwest Corridor Light Rail Project that worked to determine the best route for light rail to service southwest Portland, Tigerd, and Tuolatin communities. Currently, my family has completed a land use agreement with the city of Portland to develop a mixed-use complex on the 2.1-acre lot bordering southwest Barber Boulevard, southwest Monoma Boulevard, southwest 19th Avenue, and southwest 17th Avenue, our family's lot. This development will accommodate five buildings with 273 residential units and nearly an acre of additional commercial space. The Southwest Corridor Light Rail Project will bring improved multimodal transportation opportunities to include sidewalks, bike paths, and bus route connectivity to the southwest Portland, Tigerd, and Tuolatin communities, and will increase the options' efficiencies and reliabilities of travel along Southwest Corridor, free from dependency on automobiles. We believe that the public investment in a transit corridor linking Portland, Tigerd, and Tuolatin will provide great opportunities for businesses to flourish along these high-density routes of travel and will encourage greater residential development options along the entire transit network. We strongly support the Southwest Light Rail Project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Well, good afternoon. It's a pleasure to speak with you all today. My name is Miranda Bonnefield. I'm a research associate at the Cascade Policy Institute. A favorite, frequently misattributed to Winston Churchill, but a favorite quote of mine is that, "However beautiful the strategy, one should occasionally examine the results." And I've heard a lot about all the strategizing y'all have been doing and about the hard work that's been put into that project, this project, and I respect that. But as we went through the 3,000-page draft environmental impact statement, we found some things that were very concerning, namely the fact that TriMet and Metro have consistently overestimated ridership on MAX for the last 25-odd years. You look at the charts that our President John Charles sent you this week, and you can see clearly that every time a new light rail line is added, there's a brief spike in ridership, but nothing that stays, that continues to increase. You see ridership steadily declining over the past 25-odd years. So we're talking now about adding yet another light rail line at the cost of $2.8 billion, which will probably be increased as, you know, we haven't discussed, we haven't finalized all of the projects that are in conjunction with this yet. But there's going to be limited usefulness for this. In addition, when we look at the individuals who actually use light rail, we find that in the last few years, as an article that was published by TriMet employees last year noted, there are more and more individuals who are from higher income brackets using light rail, which is great, but there are fewer and fewer individuals who are from lower income bracket levels. We've talked a lot today about inclusive growth and opportunity. If our goal is to provide inclusive growth and opportunity, then light rail, which is a fixed infrastructure that just has to be replaced every 30 years and has continually declining ridership, is probably not our best option. I personally would argue that our best option is probably something more like subsidizing rideshare for individuals who are too far away from current bus stops or current light rail stops so that they are more able to get to those stops. So instead of investing $2.8 or more billion into a light rail project that's not likely to meet its goals, we should be rethinking how we approach transit in order to be as inclusive and provide as much opportunity as possible. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Bill?
Good afternoon. My name is Hope M. Barrett. I've been a homeowner in southwest Portland for almost 30 years now. I'm a member of the Crestwood Neighborhood Association, and I endorse the comments that they have submitted on this. I want to just mention, elaborate on some written comments that I submitted before the October 10th scheduled hearing. As you know, there is no route now selected for the crossroads area. We had a meeting Monday night, and a new, a brand-new option was submitted. It's at least three or four months away before that process reaches the conclusion. My focus actually, in my comments today, is on the Barber Boulevard, Capitol Highway overcrossing at the crossroads. In my opinion, as I've stated in my written comments, it is by far the best option for the community from a community perspective. I understand that it's a real challenge for the sponsors of the light rail, but for the community, that is by far the best solution. We have a fundamental problem. Neither the state nor the city has ever made the reconstruction of that bridge a funding priority. You know, when you look at lists for highway, lists for transit, lists for community development, never reaches the top. But I think you're looking at the wrong list. You need a new list that covers golden opportunities. You've got an opportunity to pool funding from community development, transit, and highway to do something that maximizes benefits for the community as a whole by rebuilding that structure. It's 60 years old. It desperately needs to size its upgrade. There's no better time than the present to get that done. I think, and with your leadership, I think we can, we can grab a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to really launch the West Portland Town Center as a community asset. My only suggestion is that you not vote on this endorsement today, but instead pull it off for the three to four months that the sponsors are taking to come up with a solution and then decide whether you are comfortable with the outcome.
Okay. Thank you all. Next three?
The last three are Anton Vedderline, Wesley Risher, and Tony Jordan.
Welcome. Start with you, Anton. Give us your name, and you have two minutes.
Thank you. I am Anton Vedderline with Friends of Twiliger. Friends of Twiliger is very much in favor of Southwest Corridor Light Rail and improved transit connections to Markham Hill institutions. During the planning process, we lobbied, testified, and provided written comments on the need for a light rail stop at Markham Hill to provide the most direct and robust transit connection. However, in the interest of expedience, this locally preferred alternative bypasses Markham Hill and Portland's largest employer and potentially sacrifices Twiliger Parkway by requiring 10,000 riders a day to walk 3/8 of a mile across it to OHSU. Metro and TriMet intend to acquire the land for the connection from Portland Parks and Recreation and split the Parkway by cutting down trees and replacing them with structures of concrete and steel. The draft environmental impact statement states that, quote, "The impact to Twiliger Parkway from the vegetation removal and ground disturbance will be long-lasting and will result in severe visual change to the park. These impacts cannot be mitigated down to de minimis, and the Markham Hill connection is therefore assumed to be of permanent and permanent use regardless of the options selected," end quote. These connection options make the aerial tram seem pretty benign, and in fact, we would like to see a second tram from Barber to OHSU studied as an option because it would likely have less impact. Friends of Twiliger's mission has always been to protect the natural, scenic, and historic qualities of the Parkway. On numerous occasions over the last 100 years, the Portland City Council has taken action to preserve and enhance the Parkway as well. And now it's your turn, the current city council. We need you to unequivocally tell TriMet and Metro that Twiliger must be protected and that they need to work harder to create a robust transit connection that will not do the significant damage that these options do. And we support, or would like to see, language added to the resolution Exhibit C that would include compliance with the Twiliger Parkway Design Guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. Wes?
Good afternoon. My name is Wesley Risher. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the Friends of Twiliger as well. I happen to pull out my monthly TriMet transit passes that I've been collecting for the past 28 years of my TriMet use going to and from work. I am a true transit user and have been using it again for 28 years. Portland City Council needs to instruct the follow-on Markham Hill connection discussion to preserve the Twiliger Parkway. The Markham Hill connection has to work. The second biggest transit stop in the entire line will be at the Markham Hill Connector, and it will serve Portland's largest employer. The employees, patients, and OHSU and VA deserve to make the quickest, easiest, attractive, secure connection between the Gibbs Street Barber Station and the seventh-floor Kohler Pavilion. This represents the employees and the patients, and your instructions to TriMet and Metro is paramount. Connection two, which I passed out, you've all received it by our conversation in your offices prior to the hearing today, preserves the Parkway the best long-term and has the benefits I've mentioned. There is no need to connect the Twiliger Parkway to the Markham Hill Connector at grade. Go under the Twiliger Parkway, preserve the Twiliger Parkway. Do not allow OHSU to hijack Metro and TriMet's process and convert Portland Park property to a new front door at Campus Drive. Sam Jackson is OHSU's main entrance, not Campus Drive. When I moved to Portland in 1989, there was a parking lot at Campus Drive where there is grass today. Portland Parks revoked the permit for OHSU to have that park property restored back to grass and plants. It is park property in front of the KCI Institute, not OHSU's.
Tony?
Good afternoon. My name is Tony Jordan. I am the founder of Portlanders for Parking Reform, and I want to provide some food for thought regarding the park and rides in this project. As you heard, up to 4,075 structured park and ride stalls are planned in this project. And I'd like to provide some context of cost. I think that should always should be thought of when we're talking about parking. That's conservatively $200, probably by the time this is built, $300 million worth of parking being built in this project, which will last for a long time. To compare that, the current Metro Bond is spending about $65 million to acquire naturally occurring affordable housing near transit. So this project is expecting to spend somewhere between three and five times the amount of money on parking as we're spending to acquire affordable housing. This could be 1,200 to 1,700 built or acquired affordable housing units near this corridor, filled with 3,000 plus maybe 3,600 people or more who would ride transit quite regularly if they lived near it. It makes much better sense, I think, to build housing, a lot more housing, near this transit corridor line than to build parking. We can bring people into the transit centers with better bus service, dedicated bus lanes, et cetera. And I want to really just strike that we should really think about when this will come online and not where we are today. This project is going to be built in 2027. You know, the current climate report, we don't have the time. If we're still building 4,000 parking stalls in 2027, I think we've gone down the wrong path and we've made a terrible mistake that we probably won't recover from. So please, I urge you to not consider Fritz One because that keeps those park and ride at any station as a priority. Or, I thought we were, okay. Seemed to me it was saying, don't say, don't build it. Don't build a park and ride if you don't have to.
Tony, can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
You just said that the Portland Housing Bond has allocated $60 million for housing at various stops. Are you talking about 26199, if it passes, would allocate money? And you're talking about the Metro Bond, or you're talking about the Portland Housing Bond?
I believe the, I believe the Metro Bond was to, has, contains, I was told today, contains $60-something million to acquire, to acquire existing...
So we're talking the Metro Bond, if it passes, has money allocated?
Right, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. I think you said the Portland Bond. I just want to make sure.
I just, right until the, like, the last 10 seconds, I thought for the first time, maybe you and I are in complete agreement.
Maybe we still are.
Stop right there. Stop right there. Gavel this need into a close.
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you. Is there anybody else that didn't sign up, wishes to testify?
That's all who signed up. But that's all who signed up. We need to get the mayor back on the phone.
Okay.
He got disconnected.
Well, while you're working to get the mayor back, I assume we have some questions for staff, so Dave, probably you should come up as well.
Because you know I have another slide. This is the questions opportunity.
Yeah. Well, I'll, I'll start since we just had testimony about the OHSU Connector. I was curious whether aerial tram, second aerial tram, had been considered? And also, I think you said earlier on that an incline had been ruled out, and I guess I was curious why that was the case.
So earlier on, we looked at escalators, a number of different ideas, very early, brief look. So I think what you should be hearing from us is we think a connection is important. We have two ideas. We want to open the process back up. We know this is really important. We've heard it today. We knew it before. This is going to be really difficult, and I think we open up and look at all different options. So I think that stakeholder committee, along with steering committee coming back, been asked to report back to city council on the progress on this because it's something that's very important. So I can imagine the first meeting we get to, we go back through and say, this is what we looked at. What else should we be looking at? I'm pretty sure someone else is going to say, we ought to be looking aerial tram. Number of us was just, we're just in Pittsburgh, so the inclines and the vaniculars keep coming up. I don't think it probably has just as much impact, if not more impact, on parks. So that's the ones we're going to be looking at. So I think, much like the Tillicum Crossing where we opened back up and said, okay, what's the art of the possible? How much benefit are we getting to it? Is it really used? Is it fast enough? I think that's the conversation we want to have again, on a more focused, community-based discussion about the connection to Markham Hill.
different vehicular traffic potentially using that street, although it is a local service street that by our transportation system plan is appropriate for that small type of commuter jobs-type connection, such as a shuttle would provide. I think probably the biggest concerns that I have heard consistently is that vehicle access to the campus is something that is of large, large concern to the neighborhood and that that drives everything else. That is my opinion, that's my opinion for what it's worth.
My button, I don't know if it is according to.
It is now.
Carla, now it's on.
Thank you very much. It's a bad sign when you get muted by the council clerk.
I'm sorry. So you were saying?
I'm going to withdraw Fritz three because I think that a small shuttle, as was described, might not have the kind of bad impacts if. The challenge, though, I think in addition to what Teresa said, is that if we've got 900 parking spots at 53rd, there's then a lot of traffic that's coming along Pomona, Capitol, 53rd to get to that parking lot and then taking the shuttle to PCC. So it really is connected with, should we have a massive parking structure, a parking place which won't be used very much by Portland residents that would then, you know, that would be the shortest connection to take the shuttle rather than parking at the Barber Transit Center. So that's all kind of connected with those, which is why I would like us to figure out a way to have further discussions on the location and capacity of the parking, park and rides. So I appreciate you working with my chief of staff behind the scenes to look at my other amendments. Colleagues, I'm going to withdraw number six about the grocery stores because I think it's covered in the, especially those serving local residents. So I'm withdrawing three. I'm withdrawing six. On number one.
He withdrew number two also.
Two is already gone. I never proposed it. But number one is about the Barber Transit Center and whether or not there should be park and ride facilities there. And the way staff has it, they've already made the decision that the city's best interest would be best served by elimination of park and ride facilities at Barber Transit Center. I believe there's a lot of Portland residents who live a mile north or a mile south who, although you might think a mile is easy to do with a bus or by walking, in fact, it's very steep terrain. There aren't sidewalks to connect even to the sidewalks that there are. And so as a practical matter, as we head into daylight savings time and cold rainy winters, a lot of Portland residents, both in the Monemah neighborhood and West Portland Park and far southwest in Arnold Creek, are going to want to be able to park at the Barber Transit Center. And I believe that the West Portland Town Center itself is not likely to be sustainable unless there is some parking to support businesses there. So I think that that is an open question, and so I understand that Teresa's concerned about the word determine and whether review or is there anything else that could get amended into that sentence that would make it?
Can I ask also an additional clarifying question? When you use, I was focused more on West Portland Town Center planning process first to just understand because everything in here seems to be a term of art. What do you refer to when you say West Portland Town Center planning process?
The process that Eric is leading.
Yeah, I believe that refers to the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability's upcoming land use planning process for the town center area, which would be going contemporaneously with the continued evolution of the project design.
Who has the final say on that, Eric?
So transit facilities, park and rides, those are actually regional facilities, and they have a regional function, not merely a local function. And we use the regional process through the Steering Committee to select where those park and rides should be best suited, where the trade-offs of cost, ridership, traffic-related impacts, and all the other elements happen. So the, I don't know how the West Portland Town Center's planning process aligns with or does not align with the work we'll be doing early this next year on the transit center, but it's really not just about land uses. It's really, it's, there's a whole spectrum of things that will go into evaluating which park and rides can be added to the project in such a way that we're balancing ridership and cost so that we are cost-effective and competitive for the funds at the federal level.
Commissioner Fritz, would you consider withdrawing Fritz one if the council passed Fritz seven?
We've got.
I won't support that.
I'm just, I'm trying to understand if there's a relationship between the two.
I have some questions actually on the land use final order, but I'm wondering in light of what you're saying. It's hard for me. We could, there is this ongoing discussion of what capacity the park and rides, the location of the park and rides, particularly the two that are in this section of Portland, which, as I said, 50, the one at 53rd is mostly going to serve people who don't live in Portland and is going to cause cut-through traffic. One of the amendments that I suggested, which was rejected, which I'm not pushing, is that if there's going to be a lot of cut-through traffic from Kerr Parkway, 49th to the 53rd park and ride, if there is one, there's a lot of major neighborhood collectors that don't have sidewalks, that wouldn't get sidewalks, and which would, so with increased traffic would be really challenging. So let me just ask my questions about the land use final order because that's the piece that I still don't understand. My understand, what I had previously read was that when Metro drops the land use final order, all affected jurisdictions must conform their land use plans to the land use final order and issue all necessary permits consistent with it. The requirements of this law are the only land use procedures and requirements to which land use decisions and land use approvals of any kind related to the construction or operation of the project shall be subjected. So how does that still allow us to have a Twilliger Parkway plan or make changes in any of these factors?
I'll take a shot at this.
Thank you.
The proof is in the taste of the pudding for, we still go through local land use approvals. We will still go through the Type III process for design review and the E-zone that we need to go through for that process. So let's just take Markham Hill for instance. So the first thing that we want to do is convene the stakeholder group that we have that will be made of neighborhoods, and we've talked about that group. That makes a recommendation, the Steering Committee made up of elected officials. In this case, Commissioner Daley would be sitting on that. They make a, they make a choice of, okay, is that the right choice that we should then put into an environmental impact statement? We then go through that environmental impact statement. There are federal rules about Section 4F parks that we've got to adhere to, and the city has another opportunity to comment on that. Then we, after we've got approval, we've got funding, then we would then proceed through the local land use approvals, as we mentioned before, the E-zone and the design review. All of those are opportunities for certainly public comment, and those are, the local jurisdictions' rules, their objectives, goals and objectives are applied to the approval of that.
Thank you. That's helpful. And what you said earlier was helpful too in terms of the, and Malu also in terms of the amendments that can happen at the Metro Council as we, this process moves forward.
Can I say one last thing?
Please.
Same process, telecom crossing, a lot of work that went into what does the city need, what do we need in order to produce something that we think the community can be proud of? That's the aim. That's what we're trying to do with the Markham Hill Connector.
I appreciate that. So then why does it say in the state law that they, that doesn't happen?
State law, state law. Legislature said, we want to protect the project, really, and again, I hope the press isn't talking here, but there are places around the country where you have litigants who are trying to hold the project up for any reason that slows things down. This gives a project certainty, and that's really important when we're going and competing against other cities across the nation, having certainty as you start moving forward. If you get into a lawsuit at a later date, that, over a land use process, that provides certainty and a way for us to be able to be competitive on a federal level.
Thank you. That's helpful. And what we, is currently in the locally preferred alternative, doesn't include things like the Collins Tunnel, which was just discussed a couple of days ago. Does it lock us into the crossing to a little parkway? No.
No, it does not. And nor does it lock us into the, in fact, we modified the, the Steering Committee told Trimet to move forward with an LPA, and when we started looking at Taylor's Ferry, you'll notice the Lufa, there are maps associated with it, no longer includes that. So if we wanted to go and choose the Collins alignment per se after we've had this process and the B2, we find some issues with it, we wanted to go back to the Collins, we would have to go back through and then amend through another process that modification.
Okay. Thank you. This is all very helpful. I appreciate it very much. And so in light of this, I'm going to withdraw Amendment seven because it does seem like we need to keep this project on the right timeline. Just a couple more questions. Supposing we, the process decides that, yes, we are going to take land from Parks to Twilliger. Who wins between Parks if Parks says no and Trimet says yes?
Well, we wouldn't take property away. What we would look to do is have what we would call a continuing control agreement. We've had lots of agreements with Portland Parks, and I can just point to lots of places where we've done work together, and one of them was the Central Greenway where we did work together. And in this, we would be working with Parks Department to try and make sure that we found something that they found acceptable. So in the end, Parks has a huge say in this alignment and how it would work. That's why in our stakeholder, our stakeholder committee, we've proposed to have the directors of BDS, directors of PBOT, and directors of Parks Bureau because we want to make sure that we haven't done something that we can't get through permitting, that we're smart enough, that we pre-look at that.
Can I just make a comment? Someone testified, I made a note, that it seemed to imply that OHSU would, quote, "hijack" this process. I assure you, as the new Parks Commissioner, we'll be looking out for, to balance the interests of people that have a justifiable right interest in getting to the main campus up there. I happen to be a frequent flyer up there, so I understand the need, with balancing a citywide treasure. And thank you for putting us at the table. We have confidence in the collaborative process that will unfold, that the interest that we're going to stake out and the interest that both Trimet and Metro will be balancing will be done in a way that's collegial.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. So my final change to my amendments before we go back to number one is on number four, which is the 68th Avenue Station. My understanding is that the staff is okay with the first paragraph and Part B about pedestrian and bicycle facilities to get to 68th, but not with A, so I'd like to withdraw Part A of that.
Or amend. You're amending.
I'm amending number four to remove A.
Okay.
I'll second that.
And I, thank you. And again, as we go through them, I'd like to hear from staff directly because I'm getting kind of.
Yeah, I guess the staff person's perspective who provided that is that's an off-the-cuff, reading this in the moment and providing some level of what Teresa thinks. I also think the line should be purple. It doesn't always mean that that's the right answer. Actually, I will tell you that the West line truly is the purple one already.
This is stuff probably you'd be doing anyway, right? Talking to Tiger and providing pet and bike facilities?
It absolutely is. And my perspective on the other element of that where you're suggesting that the inclusion of the bike and pet facilities be on the light rail structure, that's the council directing that as opposed to the Steering Committee who said, evaluate that, but please look at the other opportunities for providing a crossing of I-5. We don't know yet that that bridge is going to connect people to where they want to go. We just don't. And it's my belief that for us to be directive at this point, and guess what? We will be paying for that. That is, that is likely to be transportation SDC dollars that are brought to a project, and I think it's warranted to have the entirety of the Portland corridor. We've got a lot of projects, whether it's Sidewalk on Pomona or Lesser Road or Capitol Hill Road, and I think it would be premature to focus and dictate that here. That again is Teresa Boyle's personal opinion.
Just adopted by Commissioner Fritz, though, so now it's. And so actually, and actually, you used a word that I think might work in Fritz one in terms of looking at the park and ride, and that is to say, however, the appropriateness and capacity of a park and ride facility at Barber Transit Center should be evaluated.
Can you read that one more time for me?
However, the appropriateness and capacity of a park and ride facility at Barber Transit Center should be evaluated. Rather than saying yes or no now, that's part of, you know, I think what we're trying to do.
So that's your amendment?
Yes, that's my amendment.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
So one amendment.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
Oh, no, I have some questions. I'm the Transportation Commissioner. First, I want to thank my staff and Bureau staff for taking the time and putting in the effort to consider all of Commissioner Fritz's amendments. It took a considerable amount of time, and unfortunately, I only received these most recent amendments 45 minutes before council convened, so I'm feeling very uncomfortable about making a decision here without being able to connect with my Bureau staff. So the remaining amendments are Fritz one, Fritz four, and Fritz five, and I want to know if Bureau staff or you have any concerns with these amendments.
Not having them in front of me, it's kind of difficult. Sorry.
Commissioner Daley, do you want to take like a five-minute recess to let staff look at them?
Sure.
I mean, would that be helpful? I feel like I've lost track of what everything is. I'm really uncomfortable trying to address. So I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks.
How about a three-minute recess?
Dang. I was hoping for five. Thank you.
It always turns into five. I could disappear for five.
So one would be, however, the purpose of parking and riding should be evaluated.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to. 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 I'm going to.
Is, Commissioner Udaley, do you want to take like a five-minute recess to let staff look at them?
Sure.
I mean, would that be helpful? I feel, I feel like I've lost track of what everything is.
Yeah, I have too.
I'm really uncomfortable trying to address, so I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
How about a three-minute recess?
Dang, I was hoping for five. Thank you.
It always turns into five.
I could disappear for five.
So, one would be, excuse me, one would be however, the purpose of parking, parking rides should be evaluated.
Okay.
The value of...
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 Okay.
The list vote.
Just so I know what I'm actually voting on, that's, that's all that matters.
Sitting on the substitute, so the resolution will be as amended, and then we'll move forward with further amending the exhibit.
So when, what is the final vote?
And then you'll vote on everything as amended.
Okay.
There'll be a couple more.
I will save my closing remarks for that moment.
Okay. Yes.
Okay, so the first vote will be on, on the substitute, Commissioner Udaley's substitute Exhibit C.
Udaley?
Yes.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye.
Okay, the, now we will vote on Fritz 1.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye. Okay, the amendment is adopted. Next to Fritz number four, as amended concerning 68th Avenue Station.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye. Okay, amendment's adopted. Last amendment is concerning historic landmark, Fritz number five, historic landmarks review.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
I'm going to support this based on the representation on the record, that this doesn't change what's already in Exhibit C. Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Uh, yeah, I would echo, I'm going to support this based on what Commissioner Fish just said, that this is what's reflected in agreement. Aye. Okay, amendments are adopted, so we are now at the point of adopting the substitute with amendments.
So, voting on the resolution now as amended.
Oh, okay.
This is the last vote, right Carl?
Slightly different approach.
This is, yeah, this is slightly, that's a slightly different approach than I would have taken on this.
I don't...
But I will defer, we will defer to the city attorney. So, anyway, so this is the vote.
Final vote on the resolution as amended, correct.
Okay.
Udaley?
So, before I make my official closing remarks, I want to comment on a couple pieces of testimony that came before us today. I share some of the concerns expressed by community members. And I want to just share that what I see with a challenge with our mass transit is that we have a product mismatch, just like we have with housing. And that might not make any sense, so I'm going to explain it. We have seen this phenomenon of major transit projects raising property values, displacing lower-income residents transit, who are then replaced by more affluent residents who may not choose to use mass transit. They may drive themselves, they may use ride shares or cabs. That's one of the challenges we have to ridership. There's also the relative convenience of TNC. There's the TNCs. There's the fact that lower-income transit, or lower-income people who are being forced further and further out of the central city don't have access to adequate public transit. There's lack of affordable housing close to jobs. This is just to say, I don't believe that increasing ridership on mass transit is a lost cause. I think because we have failed to mitigate displacement, and because we haven't developed housing strategies alongside these transit projects, we have seen decreased ridership. And it's my goal that we don't continue to do that, and that moving forward, we will see increased ridership. And I believe that we've taken measures in this plan to guarantee that. So, I want to thank everyone. And I also wanted to comment about autonomous vehicles versus mass transit. In a dense urban area like Portland, autonomous vehicles are not going to replace mass transit. We will still need mass transit. And there's no guarantee that autonomous vehicles are going to decrease congestion or decrease pollution. So, again, this is, we have choices of how we kind of prioritize and roll out our approach. And I just, I've been hearing about autonomous vehicles and how they're going to solve all our problems. We don't need parking, we won't need buses, and it's just not true. So, now I'm going to move on to my official remarks. First of all, I want to thank PBOT's interim director, Chris Warner, interim deputy director, Noah Siegel, as well as Teresa Boyle and Art Pierce, who've worked on the Southwest Corridor Plan for so many years. Many more years than I have been here. And I'm grateful, I'm grateful for that. Thank you to Counselor Bob Stacy from Metro and TriMet's general manager, Doug Kelsey, who gave testimony earlier. Thank you to everyone who worked on the MOU, which is Memorandum of Understanding, which I will explain a little bit later. Notably, Ryan Curran, Eric Engstrom, Kimberly Branham, Lisa Aboff, Matthew Scheibold, Jill Chen, Carl Dinkelspiel, and Shannon, Director Shannon Callahan. Thank you to TriMet staff, who also worked on the MOU, including Dave Unsworth, Lance Erz, Bernie Bottomley, and Maurice Anderson, and also Kenny Asher from Tigard. Thank you to our university partners, OHSU, PCC, PSU, NUNM, and the Portland VA Medical Center. And thank you to every member of the public who shared their views and provided suggestions over the last seven years, including up to today, on planning and community engagement. A Southwest Corridor public transit improvement has been in the works since the 1980s. And I was actually a driver and a transit user between Sherwood and PCC Sylvania and downtown Portland. And it was already becoming pretty gnarly out there 30 years ago. So, can only imagine how bad it's gotten since then. I've been living in the city since then, so. I strongly support a regional agreement to secure land for affordable housing along this route, which is what the MOU does. With the MOU in place, we'll not just improve regional mobility. We will add hundreds of affordable units along the corridor, and we will actively protect against displacement and gentrification. I look forward to serving on the Southwest Corridor Steering Committee and ensuring that this project meets our transportation, this project and future projects meet our transportation, housing, economic, and equity goals. Although I think this is the last major leg of this particular endeavor, it is by no means the last major public transportation project we're going to see in the metro area. And I hope this can be an example of how to thoughtfully implement similar major public transit projects in years to come, which I probably will be deeply involved with. I can't wait. And I vote aye.
Fritz?
I've lived within a mile of the Barba Transit Center for the last 32-plus years. The first five years to the north near Monoma, and for the last, since then, near PCC Sylvania. So, this is obviously very near and dear to me in many different ways, because it's been a project that we've been waiting for in Southwest. And we patiently waited our turn for other, more, less affluent neighborhoods to have theirs. And indeed, in that time, our neighborhoods diversified. And there is now a much more mixed income, certainly south of Barba. That is an important factor. I need to mention, my chief of staff lives almost in the crosshairs of the crossroads. And so, we have been, worked very carefully to make sure that neither of us has a direct conflict of interest, which is, to this point, we don't, or even a potential one. I want, Commissioner Udaley started by saying that opportunity came up a lot in her talking points. And I agree, this is a huge opportunity. The one that we talked about a lot towards the end was evaluate. And thank you for providing that, because we are still in the evaluation phase. And thank you to everybody who participated in this process, whether attending here today, sending in comments. Thank you, of course, particularly to Teresa Boyle. You have been so responsive, and Art Pierce, and your entire team. Every one of the four people sitting at the table here have been very patient and worked your way through and been willing to compromise. And that's what we're talking about for this project, is let's not compromise where we absolutely need to hold firm, like in affordable housing, like in locally-owned businesses. I think in like not providing park-and-ride spaces for people who don't live in Portland. But that, of course, is to be evaluated. And I guess I just need to close by saying, I don't know where people are getting that ridership is going down. I regularly have to stand up on the bus both ways. When I ride light rail, it's packed. And this, one light rail driver can get 300, it's 180 people per car. So, you've got two cars, you've got over 300 people by one driver. And I think we are going to be really happy to have this project moving forward. If we do go into another recession, that we'll have a major public project, that we will get it even righter than we did before. So, thank you very much, all of you. And thank you again, Commissioner Udaley. I'm pleased you're going to be serving on the Southwest Corridor Committee. I look forward to the work sessions and the reports coming back to council. Aye.
Fish?
Well, this has been a really interesting hearing. And I want to thank everyone that took time to share a perspective with us and testify. And I want to especially thank the staff, who've done really a superb job. I find these gnarly transportation issues sort of remind me of the gnarly land use issues we have, where they're highly technical, and you need a roadmap, and it's easy to get lost, and there's a lot of moving pieces. At the end of the day, we get to the right outcome because there's a high degree of trust and collaboration across systems. And that's our insurance policy. And that's, the proof is, I mean, that's how we've been able to build a system that's the envy of the country. And I'm confident we'll continue to operate that way. I think we set a record today for the use of creative acronyms. I stopped counting after S W E D S, E I S, C A C, L P A, M O U, B R T, F T A. I got, I got some kind of, my pen started, I started getting some kind of repetitive motion problem with my hand, so I stopped making any more notes. But we set a record. It is highly prescribed, and it's highly technical, which makes superb staff work even more valuable in this setting to help lay people up here, understand what the hell you're talking about. So, again, Teresa, Art, everybody who has worked, everybody on the panel here, and who's been providing technical support, thank you very much. I also want to just call Counselor Stacy out for a blatant misrepresentation on the record. He said in his testimony that he's worked with three members that are here present today on this matter. He neglected to mention that Mayor Wheeler took all the bureaus for a period of time and actually had transportation. So, I actually counted four. And we hope he doesn't make similar errors in future public testimony. Chris Warner's here, so I have to just acknowledge that long before Chris was acting director and Commissioner Udaley was spending a fair amount of time putting together interesting notebooks that had history of Portland in them, I was, Chris hijacked my likeness, and it now appears as me, in a guide to Portland politics. And I guess I should be flattered that in the record, we'll always have his picture rather than mine, his image rather than mine, in that useful guide. And finally, I just did the math, and I look forward to being at the September 27 opening. I would ask, if you wouldn't mind, if it's not an inconvenience not to hold it on the 30th, because that's my birthday. So, if we could move it around, I don't want to, again, I don't want to put any additional burdens on your staff.
Most likely, it's Saturday or Sunday, so we'll work on that.
I'm excited that we're moving forward on this, and cautiously optimistic that we'll catch a wave and get the federal financing we need, get the local match, and move forward. So, thank you all for contributing to what I think is really one of the great honors of our job, which is to be a participant in this kind of process at city council. Aye.
Wheeler?
Oh, excuse me. And I want to just, I neglected to mention the commissioner in charge. I was backing into it. But I want to thank Commissioner Udaley. She's had PBOT for about 24 hours, and she's already leading a process about the next big transformative transportation project in our backyard. So, I guess that makes her a quick learner. Thank you for your leadership on this. Aye.
Wheeler?
This is a bold vision, and it's a necessary vision. I'm over here in the chief's seat. That's why, I hope that's why you're laughing. This is the heckler's seat from now on, and I sort of like it over here. But at any rate, this is a necessary vision, and it's a bold vision. And I think all of us understand that our region is growing. People continue to move here. And if we want it to continue to be vibrant and livable and economically prosperous, then we have to take the steps to make big infrastructural investments like this, to keep people moving, to keep our economy moving, to give us opportunities to further develop and expand options around commerce, around housing. And I'm particularly proud of the fact that this entire effort has really focused on not just the transportation piece, but the livability piece, the community piece, the displacement concerns, the housing imperative. All of these pieces have come together in a way that I'm really energized by and hopeful about. So, this is an important waypoint along the way. I want to thank everybody who is engaged in this. Commissioner Udaley, thank you for moving this forward. As Commissioner Fish said, it is a very technical and complicated issue. And I appreciate all the work you did. In fact, the double work you did, not only to make sure that this came to council and that it was well-managed, but at the same time, you were learning all about this issue, really starting from scratch. And I think you've done an exceptional job, and I want to thank you for that. And Commissioner Fritz, I want to thank you for bringing forward good amendments and being flexible in terms of how this played out today, and taking into account the testimony of staff. I think this worked out very, very well, and I'm appreciative of that. Michelle, since you're standing right next to me, I want to thank you for helping me to understand the complexities of this. You've been a valuable member of my team. And certainly on this issue, you've been no exception. So, thank you for that. I'm very happy to vote aye on this resolution.
Salzman?
Well, this is going to be a fantastic project. And it's due to a lot of, it's due in part, I guess I should say, it'll be a fantastic project if it comes to reality. It's a little sobering to hear we're only 5% of the way. And let's not forget, we're counting on 50% federal funding, and we're counting on voter approval for almost the other 50%. So, those are, to my mind, you know, two big ifs that have, still have to be answered. And, you know, in Washington DC, I don't think light rail, as in our past projects, has been as much of a manifest destiny as it was then, and will, it will be this time around. It's just anybody's guess. But the planning that's gone into this, and the cooperation of all the jurisdictions involved, has been outstanding. And, you know, I first got my, one of my earliest political involvements, I served on the West Side Light Rail Citizen Advisory Committee. So, I know all the work that had to occur back then for what was a complicated project. This seems, you know, as complicated, if not more. There's no, well, at least not yet, there's no couple-mile-long tunnel involved. But I do think, I'm just very proud of all the cooperation, TriMet, City of Portland, Tigard, Metro, Palatin, all the entities that have really rolled up their sleeves and gone to lots and lots of meetings. And our citizens, too, that stepped up and served on these citizen advisory committees. I was really impressed to hear how much time they spent, and they really got into it. And the fact that they were unanimous in recommending this locally-preferred alternative, as was the steering committee, is a testimony to the great work that everybody has done on this project. You know, now we just have to really do all the other 95% of the work to make sure we can break ground. And as a resident of the Southwest Corridor, I truly look forward, if I'm still here in 2027, to walking to the Custer Street Station, which is the closest station to my house, and boarding, boarding the system, and taking a ride somewhere, either east or west, or north or south, depending how you regard what direction Barbara Boulevard goes in at certain points in the city. But I think this is a fantastic project, and I'm very pleased to be here today to support this. Aye. Okay, the resolution is adopted, and we stand adjourned.